All right, I'm gonna call the order, the town council meeting. Work session for Tuesday, September 26th, it is 3:00 PM. We begin with planning commission decisions. Any questions for staff?
Do we have that call up scheduled?
Yeah, that's scheduled for October 24th. Thank you.
Like to push that out a couple more weeks, just. Anything, anything? Alrighty, let's go on to legislative review, we start with net zero density code amendment. Second reading.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Today for second reading, we have the net zero energy. New code amendment, this would allow us to measure density. By eliminating the, from the midpoint to the exterior wall from the overall density calculation. So we're not punishing people for achieving net zero. There's been no changes since the first reading.
Thank you. Questions? No, everybody good for a second reading?
Yeah.
All right. Boec and F D Placer lease renewal, first reading.
Scott? Mayor and Council. Before you have our two lease renewals for the Breckenridge Outdoor Education Center. We'll deal with them one in, one at a time because they have some differences between them. The F and D Placer one specifically is, well, both of them are for a 75 year term. That's, that's the ultimate goal, we met in November, discussed. Kind of some of the parameters of this, of these leases. They both are, like I said, 75 years. There's also a statement about if the Boec ceases to operate as a mission based organization. That the, and is given an opportunity to cure any default related to a mission based use. The town will be able to kind of exit out of the lease. As well as the town has the authority to review the lease presence, the use of the lease premises every 10 years. And then lastly, the public access to the trails were retained through that process. So the differences primarily between the two is that the F and D Placer obviously is a different location than the Wellington one. But the F and D Placer, the buildings on that site are owned, are built and owned by the Boec and the ones in Wellington are owned by the Town of Breckenridge. So there's some difference between the two, but otherwise the general parameters are the same. We did expand at Boec's request, some of the exclusive use area at the F and D Placer. Primarily for the old low ropes course, if you remember where the Sawmill Trail comes in, that area. Has basically been expanded to be an exclusive use area. And there's a corresponding decrease in the non-exclusive use area in that same area, so. Those, both of those two together are here for first reading, appreciating questions that you have.
And there is still egress through there. Even though we kind of cordon off some of them for exclusivity of their use, there is still ways for the public to get through.
Correct, the exhibits show there's, there's corridors where the, where the two trails come into that area, that newer exclusive use area, those two trails connect through and are retained for public access.
Got that future public trail that's marked on the map, is that for the future ADA trailer, what was that?
Yes, that's intended to be the trail that's hopefully to be done this year yet. There's some work to be done with moving the gate so we have good access ADA access or wheelchair access to that trail. Once that gets essentially in place and constructed, it will be on the Boec, it'll be on the F and D Placer side of the line versus the Trappers Glen side of the line. Once it's there, that'll be again, open to public use as well.
Scott? Even though the map was updated for the exclusive use area, it's not really a change in public use, right? Because that low ropes course area has existed for a long time and the public wasn't supposed to be using it, right?
Correct, so that, that low ropes course area at one point utilized the, the trees for the anchors, for the, for the ropes they had. Trees went away with, with the pine beetle. And so the low, the low ropes features were basically there, but not utilized. And you know, yes, this allows now the Boec to reimagine how they want to use that space. And it will be, they could fence it, they could do certain things to kind of control public access, but there's no, I would say. Loss in terms of public access, it's more about square footage.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions? All right, both of these are on first reading tonight, we good? Alright. Thank you.
Two no motions will be need to be made.
Yes, sir. Individually.
Just to clear that up for the rest of the.
Thank you guys.
Thanks, yeah.
Thanks for being wonderful community members. Tax code update exempt products, first reading.
It's math team.
Math, team math.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We have a first reading for proposed town tax code revisions. Staff is recommending that we exempt products and add these exemptions to our town code. Mainly being any government imposed, imposed fees like the Colorado retail delivery fee. Incontinence products and diapers and menstrual care. The state of Colorado alongside other municipalities have already passed this taxation exemption. So we recommend that we move forward with these exemptions for sales tax. Any questions?
Questions for staff? No. Easy.
Easy.
Nice job.
Thank you.
Good memo. Oh, I thought you were gonna, had about 20 questions.
I learned my lesson.
Stables property transfer.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
First reading of an ordinance to. Allow for the transfer of the first phase of the Stables property to the developer. So that they can go vertical with the first units. And I think it's all spelled out in the memo, but if you have any question, happy to answer those.
I do.
And a couple of questions came up earlier about whether, what protection does the town have once we're leading this property over in the agreement? That we signed with the developer. It clearly states in there that if they are not, you know, anything they don't do, we have, there's a cure period that we do. And if they, if that doesn't work, then that property defaults back to the town if it's not used for what its intended purpose was. So we feel that, that the town is protected. You know, if, if, obviously when those properties sell, then it's, you know, sold. Where the houses are to the people, but if anything is not developed or part of that thing, that they're not following that agreement, we have the right to get it back, so.
I just want to make sure that with what's going on in other parts of town, that if. We get everything that's.
I think we felt comfortable.
Yeah, yeah, we did include that reverter clause in there. Just to make sure that if she doesn't perform, we get the property back. You know, there's some other protections in place in terms of, you know, the only thing you can actually use that property for is 61 deed restriction before sale units pursuant to the deed restriction. And the master plan as well, but the reverter clause, I think addresses the issue of potentially losing that property if she doesn't perform.
Easy enough. Anyone else? All good, right, thank you.
Thank you.
Department of Local Affairs Strong Communities Planning Grant.
This is actually also a ordinance. Basically confirming that the town is committed to the match for this particular grant. This is a fairly small grant that we're submitting. Each and for it has to do with planning for the block 11 property, some of the initial planning and testing that we want to do. The amount of the grant is around 200,000, we have to commit to $20,000 match on that.
Yeah. Good. Any questions? Alright. Town Attorney Agreement by Resolution. Anyone?
No, just that you're awesome.
It's not how you negotiate, by the way.
Can we buy it, let's buy the car.
So you know, so. Alright, Managers Report, we start with the Public Projects Update.
Kristen, I don't know if your mic's on, it felt like it wasn't.
Hello.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I can take questions on most of the projects and Kristen's happy to take questions on fiber.
I, we need to speak up a little bit, we talk a little more into the mics, please. Having a hard time hearing.
The dam's awesome. The dam looks, I mean, it's awesome, it's really cool.
And another visit to the dam?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Now that it's not dangerous, yes. Questions? For staff on public projects, anything on fiber? Every week we ask about fiber unless she's sitting down here.
I know. Coming down.
Alright, thanks, mobility. What, do you have a question?
No, but I loved what, there was a little blast of ALO that ALO put out when Comcast was down.
Yeah, we had a lot of interest last week, so thank you.
Good, they need to keep doing stuff like that.
Yeah.
That was great.
Yeah.
Quick reaction.
Now mobility.
Sorry.
Yeah, they need to get a little more aggressive.
They did a good job. I got an email.
Hey Matt.
Afternoon, Mayor and Council. Mobility update is in the packet. We did hold that meeting last Friday with some of the general residents over on that south side of French Street in regards to the Blue Route, so. Overall, we left that meeting, I think with a lot of understanding on what we're doing. And also really where we came from on the, on the topic of what's going on here, so. Everybody seemed happy with, with where we're headed, I think the big update that's in there and it's in your packet as well as. The ski resort doing their kind of high demand bus down Jefferson or up Jefferson and then down French Street. So that seems to resolve the majority of the issues in that area. So.
Yeah, good job with the public outreach too, here went pretty well.
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah.
Congratulations to. On the awards.
Yeah, no kidding.
Yeah, they're awesome, we have them in our transit office, if you want to check them out, they're actually really awesome drawings that are done by a local artist in Fort Collins, so they're pretty cool. Yeah.
Snowstang. Where is the ski area?
The last time I spoke with them, they were going to reassess where they wanted to be with it. They originally committed only $20,000. To be part of it, so that would leave us with the majority of it, which I don't think is a great number. I think this is a pretty important, you know, 50/50 sponsorship, so partnership, so.
The council all agrees, I think we should send a message through Matt that this is important to the community and we expect a 50/50. Match on, on running the snowstang for this year if everybody agrees with that.
Absolutely.
Ours and their sustainability goals, that just seems like it makes all the sense, so.
I absolutely agree.
They'll come.
So we'll let you take the lead on this and then if you need some higher up discussion, let Kelly or I know.
Appreciate, yeah, I appreciate your support and I'm sure they're listening, so they'll. Let us know shortly.
This is a really important one, so.
No kidding.
Matt, in the C dot letter, they reference some ski areas offer discounted tickets, did they'll do that?
No, it's not really something that is part of their package that they would, they would offer in general, so no.
Anything else for Matt?
Yeah, I got a question. Is the company that we got our electric buses from in chapter 11 or bankrupt, going bankrupt or something?
They're in chapter 11, yep, they're in the most recent update that we got is they are working through separating the business into three entities. And yeah, we're, we're working through that process.
What's that mean for us?
Right now, it should mean business as usual, we are having some struggles with getting our, one of our buses repaired, one of the new buses is.
Hot parts?
No, really to get somebody up here. They're pretty strapped, I guess they're, they're told what they can do with their funding. And so they just can't get somebody to come from the front range to, to fix our bus. They're also working on an engineering solution to the, to the bus, so. Yeah.
Probably won't be the company we go with on our next purchase.
Yeah. Good move, yeah.
And we are at the point where we need to push on them. A little bit more, since we have a million dollar bus that we keep.
The heavy hand of Matt.
Yeah.
Anything else for mobility? Alright, sustainability.
You get Teddy and Hayden today for that.
Sighting.
Theodore.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We do not have anything to add beyond what was in the memo, but we're available if you have any questions.
This is the Breckenridge rep for CC4CA.
Jesse. And sometimes me. Yeah.
I was curious about that, just seeing the policy statement and how they may or may not weigh into legislation similar to 213. Where they might stand, I think Jesse said last year they didn't take a formal position.
They did, they did not last year, it's something that they've kind of spun up a separate working group to try to. Figure out if there is consensus on some sort of position on that. But ultimately, they're a consensus based organization and if one or one entity within the coalition does not agree, then they will not take a position.
Okay.
I think that's a good way to handle it. Other questions?
You want to do the e-ride report while they're up here?
I like when they go away and then have, no, do, do the e-ride. Ride.
I saw a guy in the e-ride pulling two kids on skateboards. None of them had helmets, it just made me proud to be American.
Right?
Yeah.
Okay, well, so for the e-bike share program, I had kind of three things I wanted to go through with you all. One, I just wanted to review the achievements of the Breck E-Ride so far this season. The second thing was to discuss the budget request for the program for next year. And depending on how the conversation goes with number two, the third thing we wanted to talk about is the eight proposed expansion hubs for next year. And if council has any feedback on this. So diving right into the first one. Highlighting some of the successes, you know, the, this program came out of supporting some other town adopted goals from the Destination Management Plan. More boots and bikes, less cars, establishing Breckenridge at the leading edge of an environmental stewardship and sustainable practices. And then our Climate Action Plan goals related to reducing emissions. So in that, on that front, the e-ride, you know, makes progress on those goals, we reduced emissions. We provided alternative transportation to private vehicle usage. You know, increased transportation options for that first last mile connections. And hopefully we reduce some congestion as a result of that. You know, to support the program, we did have a C dot grant that covered 50% of the cost this year. We have about $200,000 in matching grant funds available for next year as well remaining. Those funds have to be spent by June 1st, 2025, so if there's any unspent next year, we could potentially. Spend them in a, in the following year as well. And then just kind of quickly running through some of those statistics that are in your memo. Did about 16,891 trips through September 17th. So we've done even more since then and we will continue to do more, we're running through October 31st through Halloween. But that worked out to about 138 trips a day, covering just under 30,000 miles distance. The average trip length was about 1.8 miles or 17 minutes. And from our user survey, users reported that the average, or that on average, 58% of the Breck E-Ride trips. Replace trips that they would have otherwise used a private vehicle for. So taking that data, we can project that we reduced about just under 10,000 private vehicle trips between May and September 17th. And that amounts to about 14,700 pounds of CO2. Reduced as a direct result of this pilot program. You know, one thing I think we're particularly proud of is the emphasis of, on equity with the program. From the start, the app, the hub signage and the website are all fully available in English and Spanish. We offered a special equity pass for income qualified people that provided a 50% discount on the memberships, which are already one of the more affordable. Bike share memberships nationwide. And we made a point to place hub locations and workforce housing neighborhoods around town.
Teddy, how many equity passes did you sell?
We, there are six monthly and one season. Equity passes that were sold so far. I probably for the season, not many people buying season passes and monthly passes at this time of the year. And then just getting beyond all the statistics and numbers of it, really fundamentally, we offered an entirely new way for people to get around Breckenridge without needing to use a car. And you know, the number one reason on our survey that users reported that they chose to use the Breck E-Ride. Over other transportation options is because it was faster and easier. I thought that was interesting. Because it's better for the environment actually came in as number four. So you know, that's one of our goals, but for the, for the people that are using it, they really are finding this just a useful transportation option to get around town. And I think that's great, really, I think this has demonstrated that e-bikes are not just recreational toys, but they're also serious transportation tools. One of the things I've enjoyed most, most is just having people come up to me, maybe you've had this happen where people tell you about their experience taking trip. Replacing a car trip or whatever they were doing, but some way that they use the e-ride in their daily, daily life. It's been a joy to hear those stories. So lastly, before moving on to the budget conversation, I know council had asked about. The possibility or feasibility of doing some winter version of the program. Currently, Drop Mobility does not have a Fat Tire Winter E-Bike Share bike available. So we don't have anything we could roll out, you know, this winter, but it is something that they are doing research and development on. There's some, a lot of other considerations if we go down that path that we'd need to work through to, to get there. But you know, at this time, you know, staff is recommending, not recommending we do the, the winter route until, until the technology evolves a little more. Alright, that's, that's.
Questions?
Part one.
Questions about part one?
Thank you for exploring the winter options and looking at the different factors that go into that. I did have one question, do you know, do you, off the top of your head, do you have how many Town of Breck employees signed up for? Their free pass?
Yeah, there were 151 staff pass. Options activated. And that's actually been kind of a great little thread to this is. Beyond just the community impact with our town operations, we've provided a new way for town employees to get around and do their business without using a car. I rode from Public Works to this meeting on an e-ride bike. And there's been a lot of support at the staff level for the program. It's a nice little employee benefit perk of working for the town, so it's a nice little retention and recruitment tool for. For town employees as well.
Are you going to do a recap with the bike shops at the end of the, at the end of this and see?
We did, I did send out a survey to all the bike shops in town, just asking them a few basic questions on. How they thought things went this year and if they had any feedback for the program. I got eight responses from eight different shops back of those, I mean, the one thing I thought was amazing was that. We asked the question, do you support the town continuing the e-bike share program with the primary goal to provide sustainable transportation options? For locals to get around Breckenridge and 75% or six of the eight said yes. Which I, I thought was not going to be the case, that'd be flip-flopped, so. I think that, that is a, is a good success on that front.
That's excellent. Okay, part two.
Part two, the budget request for next year, so we are recommending, recommending a, an expansion of the program for next year. Adding 50 more bikes and eight new hub locations. And the contract with Drop to do that would be about $369,000. 50%, again, as we mentioned earlier, 50% of that cost, we have a grant to cover through our C dot multimodal options fund grant. So we expect we'll spend down most of that grant next year. But there is a new energy office grant opportunity that will be opening up in the first quarter of next year that we. Do think that we'll have a good chance at, at getting some funds from, for future funding in the future years. And, and then overall, just to point out that the cost per bike has gone down between this year and, and next year as well. And, and we anticipate that would, trend would continue as we scale and add bikes and hubs to the program. But I will pause there and see if council has any feedback or reactions to the budget request for next year.
Everybody good?
Yeah. And you're pretty happy with. The performance of, of, of this company and.
Yeah.
Maintenance and, you know.
Yes, yes, they've been great to work with, I'm, I'm so happy we, when we did the RFP process. We chose them over the, the others that had applied, I think they were the right choice. Definitely some, you know, first year struggles of getting the right staffing and hiring the right people and, and getting everything in place. That we're, had to work through, but overall, I think they're, they're, we're quite pleased we're working with Drop.
And how do they feel about it?
They think this has been a great success. And we've came out and, you know, beat some of their other markets that they operate in and are, in our first year, so they're, they're thrilled.
Sweet.
Yeah.
Do you think there are any hubs that are like really missing? From your list?
I do.
I know.
Yes, yes, there are and.
Sorry. I gotta head.
This is kind of getting into part, part, part three, so.
My apologies.
Anything else on, yeah, go ahead, Todd.
Think or if, if the vendor thinks there's a way to incorporate like local businesses on either, you know, kind of the, the balancing of the bikes or even the maintenance of them to maybe get them involved financially.
Like the local shops.
Yeah, get the local shop, you know, I guess that's the question, is there a way to get the local shops involved in the program? Yeah. Moving forward with operations and maintenance.
Originally, when we did the feasibility study, we did ask, you know, the bike shops if there was any interest. And at that time, they were very concerned about the program and just didn't want to show any inkling of support. So there was not a lot of preliminary inkling that they wanted to do that. I will say, it was one of the comments on the end of season survey that I sent out to bike shops that one of them did express some interest in potentially partnering on maintenance. So having heard that, we might try to explore that a little more.
That'd be cool.
They make it easier just as they try and find employees and if they already have tools and employees and shuttles, it might make the whole system just run smoother, so thanks for checking that out.
Yeah. Okay, so your question was about hubs, Kelly. And that's what this map is for, I apologize, the, the link was broken in your packet. But hopefully we got it emailed to you. So the blue pens on this map are the existing pen hubs from this season, the yellow pens are the proposed expansion hubs. For next year. Kelly, you'd asked if there were gaps that we felt weren't, and that's kind of this box here, which is the, all the purple pens. These kind of came from basically anytime someone suggests a location or asks, can we get a hub here? Put a pin down on it. And so these, this is just feedback over the course of the program and the feasibility study for potential hub locations in the future. We were not trying to go all in and. Build out all of these in year two, we're trying to just scale a few a year and add, you know, grow, grow incrementally. But there, there are gaps, particularly, you know, over. But there there are gaps, particularly, you know, over here in the Peak Nine area. There's no hubs over there. Have had quite a few requests for bottom of Snowflake Lift. So that's one. I've had requests for a second Wellington hub beyond just the one that exists there now. You know, if we were to do a second one, it would probably be at the bus stop turnaround up here, just because the town owns that property. And it does service kind of the upper part of the neighborhood, whereas there are two hubs kind of down on the lower part. So, yes, there are additional, additional ones we could look at. I'd say, you know, if you're doing math for each additional hub we want to add, it's about fifteen thousand dollars for the hub and five bikes. Just kind of the ratio that we're trying to keep bikes to hub. So we can definitely scale it up. We are under the grant dollars that we have available. So there is room if we wanted to go beyond eight to grow it, but that would be a council discretion.
I think that the one at Royal Tiger that's listed is an important one. That whole Wellington corridor is not serviced at all. And there's a, and there's a lot of homes there that you actually have to go back towards Wellington to get a bike to go into town.
Right, so. Okay. Do you want, would you be interested in that in addition to or to replace one of the proposed eight hubs for next year? And those are the yellow pins here. Guesses one question.
Well, I mean, I mean, I think we were questioning that one up above the park, right?
Yeah.
Oh, Prospector?
Prospector Park.
Yeah, that seems.
Yeah.
Seems more of a, a visitor location than a.
Sure. Okay, so we could, we could nix this one and and do Royal Tiger if that's the direction we want to go. This one, just to talk through the logic of it, it provides a hub location on the. Oh, east, east side of Main Street on the northern end of town. Currently, the the two hubs are at the Arts District and the library. So this also, as people are coming in from Wellington neighborhood, it's this kind of a straight shot on Wellington Road to zip right in. And park it there versus having to go over there. That was part of the logic behind it, but again, all this is kind of squishy. And up to interpretation.
I don't disagree with. Your logic. I think your logic is awesome. I am worried about Prospector is very visitor centric. That might not be, I think, having one around that location is the right move, but that might not be the right location. Just because really no locals.
Why don't we just move that one?
Back in the county? You know, that if you get one that could facilitate commuters that's close to that, but not at the park, like right by the county building there.
Yeah, or move it. I don't know what's best. I'm up for either of those.
Where's the bridge coming off of Vista Point that goes right to the bus stop, kind of by Corkscrew?
That's where he has the purple gear for a potential spot.
I don't see it. It's right here. It's Corkscrew.
But maybe along those lines, because if you look at Popsicle Park and the Wellington hub.
The Bridge Street.
You guys have the data, but just inadoidly, I've heard that those are regularly empty. So I'm wondering within this, can the existing hubs be expanded? Or would it make sense to add another hub? Because that area serves hundreds of workforce units.
We we have heard that feedback about, you know, some of the neighborhood hubs, Wellington, Huron Landing, French Creek. Have have been lacking on on bikes. Part of that is just because we had kind of a limited number of bikes and we tried to spread it over a greater number of hubs. Just to try to increase the usability of the system. And that the result of that was just we had the bike availability suffered in addition to some of the first year operation struggles. So we've, we're correcting that balance and we're keeping our five to one bikes to hub ratio and year two. So hopefully that will help with bike availability as well. But, yeah, I mean, a second, a second one in that area is definitely something we're is on our radar and thinking about. But Jeffrey, is that what, what location were you?
It's right where the Corkscrew and Wellington intersect. Yeah, exactly. And there's a bus stop there. And also, there's a bridge that goes from Vista Point to Wellington. And then there's the, you know, so so it could serve the Vista Point also Corkscrew. Probably Corkscrew people know really too much. Are you biking to the?
I don't know.
But anyway.
There are locals that live there, though.
Yeah.
I mean. That's why I think Royal Tiger location is great because you pick up like Dick's neighborhood, but you can also get people from the Corkscrew.
Yeah.
Because it's not that far of a walk.
Yeah.
Say a couple minute walk.
I guess depending where you are, some of those folks probably go to the French Creek.
Right.
Yeah, I was gonna say, and they then those trails come up from French Creek. So I think either one would probably be good.
Yeah, either think, think about it.
You you put a lot of.
And we can noodle on it somewhere. Okay.
Seventy five bikes this year?
Yes.
And then thirty thousand miles?
Yes.
We're talking about adding fifty bikes?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, is that enough? I mean, that's four hundred miles a bike, right? And you think about the number of trips that are replacing cars and just. I mean, I love it. You can almost feel like the presence of fewer cars here from that, in my mind, from that perspective, like the commuting and.
Well, and I think we could do a better job balancing, number one balancing, but also letting the public know what exactly what it is. Like, there was really organic. Marketing, but to do a bigger marketing push next year would be, you know, even some, some stuff inside the buses or. I mean, you guys did a great job. Don't get me wrong. It was, you know, I knew it would be super successful. Since I was the only one that thought I was gonna be a loser, I retract all my previous comments.
That's enough.
I think so. I.
It's a good step because the county really, we talked to the other managers and they really are, they really want to look at how we integrate. This into the whole countywide transit system and that last mile and maybe have. We got to figure it out, but I think they're all very interested in trying to jump onto this and and expand in the other towns.
Which means we're gonna have to geolocate.
Yeah.
Because we can't geo fence, whatever. They're gonna have to be geo fenced because you can't have people going between Breck, Breck and Frisco. Even though from a last mile standpoint, it makes sense, that also opens the door to the visitor that we don't want.
And that, yeah, I was gonna say, and that will start to frustrate.
Yeah, and that we don't want. So you'd have to geo fence them per town.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, because I, I, yeah.
Okay.
I agree with.
On that.
Okay, so.
We go too crazy. I, I mean, I fifty is a substantial increase and and I.
Yeah.
You know, I I want to be good partners with these guys and and not stretch them too far. I mean, they had some, they struggled some, you know, with parts and mechanics and I talked to the guy, he rents out where we have some. Some stuff and and, you know, they had employee issues. They had turnover right in the middle of summer. And so it's just like all startup businesses. So I I think we work with them and be a strong partner.
Works for me.
You've done an awesome job. You and your staff have done an awesome job in this, so.
This has been good. I think I eat my words, too. I think I was with you on.
Yeah.
I think Jay and I were the only ones that really supported it.
Kelly hated it.
Kelly, Kelly didn't like it. Yeah. She wanted coal powered. She wanted coal powered bicycles. Yeah.
All right. Thanks, guys. Did you need anything else from us? You'll work on that and.
Yeah, just, I mean, my notes from the conversation where I'm going to swap Royal Tiger for the.
Prospector.
Prospector Park one. So I'm going to switch those two and we're going to put ten, put a potential future hub pen for Corkscrew and kind of keep thinking about that one.
Cool.
I think we're good.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Don't let us depress your into it. That's just a, just throwing it out there.
I think we ended up under the manager's report of sustainability, the housing and childcare staff doesn't have anything additional unless council has any questions. On the recap that was in the packet.
Okay, committee reports.
We had the.
Social Equity.
Social Equity Committee.
All right.
Hello again, Mayor and Council. In your packet, you had your August financials. So overall, we're three point five million over budget. Sales tax was one million ahead of last year. Accommodation tax was flat compared to last year and real estate transfer taxes behind one million from last year. Those are all year to date numbers. As for our net taxable sales, year to date for July, they were flat in comparison with twenty twenty two. And thirty eight percent ahead of year to date, July of twenty nineteen. Just looking at the month of July, our overall net taxable sales came ahead by two percent. We saw increases in restaurant and bar of two percent, short term lodging of seven percent. And grocery of five percent. Our retail in town is. Behind by two percent and out of town is similar two percent. Real estate transfer tax for the month of August saw an increase compared to twenty twenty two of eighteen point fifty one percent. Which is pretty big compared to last year. Yep. Yes.
Sorry to interrupt.
No.
What, what is the potential variance in collection timing for retail restaurants, liquor stores, grocery stores? I mean, I'm assuming if, you know, somebody's gonna be late, somebody's, is there much of a? Build in much of a potential variance in these reports for that?
There, there is changes and so even yourself, if you you look at these numbers, like sometimes people are filing stuff late. Even for last year. And so there are small variances within the numbers. From one month to the other, but they're not large enough for us to really.
Less than one percent.
Yes, yeah.
That was really.
Yeah, but there is people that are filing late and there's amendments and adjustments throughout the year.
Sorry to interrupt. Thanks.
Do we have a handle on online taxing? I mean, you know, when I look at, when I think about retail down two percent. And I just wonder if if there is kind of a quid pro quo with a bump in online stuff that people buy. So people are buying through the mail instead of buying in our shops. I mean, is there any way you can tell that?
Yeah.
Well, that's the out of town sale.
Yeah, so there's a page that, yeah, there's a whole page that separates our retail in town versus our retail out of town.
Okay, I got you. I I I thought that was something else. No, I thought it was like people from coming to Frisco to shop.
For our summary for all funds, our revenues are ahead from our budgeted revenues. By fourteen point five million, three point five of that lives in the excise fund and two point two in the housing. Those are the major funds carrying the variances. This is mainly due to phasing as well as the investment income allocation. Our expenditures are below our budgeted expenditures by sixteen point seven and seven point nine lives in capital. Some of these projects have been deferred to twenty twenty four, two point two of it, two, sorry, two point seven of it is in housing. And that will catch up by the end of the year. Did you guys have any questions?
Questions? Yeah, one thing I'd like to see changed on the. On the charts, like the total net taxable retail, we have the, that bottom line. Is sort of irrelevant, the the bottom line that captures, you know, so it captures January through July. It'd be nice if there was a way to see the year to date. Comparison on there. Do you know what I mean? Like, so it's five hundred sixty six million dollars, but that's really compared to the. It doesn't, it doesn't really, it doesn't really mean anything to me other than, okay, that's what we did.
Until the end of the year.
Not till the end of the year, does that make any difference?
But for me, it gives you an idea of, you know, okay, this, we've been through the meat of the year. So variances are gonna, aren't gonna be as significant, whereas if we're in that first quarter. It, to me, it kind of just tells you how far, you know, which you know, but.
I I'd like to see, I'd like to see the year to date compared to year to date. If we could just do a sep, even a separate.
Another column.
Separate line underneath that or separate. Cell underneath that that just did year to date, year to date.
Yep. Okay, we can definitely adjust that and add that on there.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other changes?
All right. Thank you so much.
You guys keep giving us more information. We're gonna keep asking for more.
Point you just say, no, we're not gonna do this. Town attorney update.
Have nothing.
Excellent. Grants update. Grants.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I don't have any additional information to add to the memo, but happy to take any questions.
Well done. It's a lot of money.
Yeah, thank you.
For sure.
Questions?
Thank you.
I'm still looking at the financials.
Alrighty, Dark Sky Community Certification Update. Hi, Andy. Hi, guys.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Town Council. We just wanted to, Steve and I wanted to give you an update on where we are with the Dark Sky certification. And kind of our plan to replace the light fixtures in town that are the Wells Park nonconforming. Light fixtures to our Providence, which came up at the last council meeting. During the CIP discussion. So I provided a little bit of background and happy to answer any questions on that. We are moving forward with replace, replacing, ordering replacements, sorry. And Steve can answer a lot of questions on that, but in the packet, we have a map that kind of shows. How that replacement plan would happen, what our plan, our schedule is for that. So if we become certified, it's five years that we have to come into conformance with our town street lights. There is a little bit of issue with the Excel lights, but we are continuing to work on that with Excel. So the latest on that is that the Dark Sky International Organization that does the certification. Does not believe that that is going to affect our certification if Excel say, said absolutely not. We're not going to change our light fixtures that we own, which are shown in, I think, I don't have a color map, but I think they're pink on your. Copy. And so that's about a hundred and eighty fixtures out of, I think, sixteen hundred or so. Fixtures across the town.
Repair their own fixtures?
We've been working with Excel to repair them. There's just response time issues.
If we change over fixtures and they may refuse to, and we don't have the parts, we don't have where with all that. It'll be on them, right, to.
Maintain them.
The, the current agreement now is where the the town is maintaining them. So if we swapped out the fixtures to that Providence fixture, we'd be, we'd still be maintaining them. But we'd have, from the rest of the project, we'd have that inventory and those pieces and parts to continue running that fairly seamlessly.
Agreement is that the town will repair and replace Excel owned lights?
But they won't let us switch them out.
Well, they will at our cost. Right?
Are we up to, why do they want us to buy the poles? That's what I don't understand.
Yeah, they want, it has to do with the rates on the, on the light. So if we purchase the poles, then we have to put a meter on them. And then they can start charging us for the energy exactly as we're using it. So their, their benefit from that would be that they're metered and we're paying for all the energy that we consume as opposed to right now. Excuse me, right now it's a flat rate that we pay.
But they, maybe I'm.
It's a convoluted agreement.
Again, I'm, I'm wrong on this, but the way that I read the memo was that they wouldn't let us change it out to the Providence. Light fixture because it's there, they own it, but we're in charge of repairing the Wells Box that are sitting on top. Okay, maybe we can do some. Okay, maybe we can do some like.
You know what, I would, I would say, uh, you have a lot, a process to do before you get into that, so you might want to decide down the road, once you're there, if that um, if that's the card, if you want to play that card or not. You know, there's a lot of agreements we have with Excel, so. Although that I would worry about it right now personally, I certainly wouldn't recommend buying the
No.
Light poles.
No, no.
Absolutely, time, once we replace ours, they'll end up replacing theirs anyways, hopefully.
Sure.
Hey, have you, um, I think it's Marty Semner, have you reached out to her, kind of kept her appraised?
Yes, she was thinking of coming. I don't see her, if she's not here, she might be listening.
But you are, you are reaching out to her and keeping her in the loop.
She's in the loop.
Hey, good.
So that was, the other key piece to this, I guess, question that we had was, we're seeing like a ten to twelve percent cost increase on the inventory for the replacement fixtures. And right now, it's in the CIP for every, you know, a certain amount every five years per that map um, in the packet, but if we accelerate that, we're gonna end up saving some money too. And either way, we have to bump up the CIP because it, we've seen some cost increase already, so.
I like the five year rollout and let's do it slowly.
I agree that I, I'm more apt to go with the five year rollout, but I also think this is a large enough purchase that we should be able to work with the supplier for a purchase agreement for the thirteen hundred, five, you know, over five years and lock in a standard rate for that where we can have both the decreased cost and the five year plan. It'd be worthwhile putting that out to the supplier and, and having that discussion.
Yeah, I can certainly do that, talk with the manufacturer, see what options they have available for people's scheduled purchases like that.
They'll probably will see a little bit of an increase just because we'll also have to have a contractor, which we won't probably be able to lock in.
Julia, on the bowl, since we are going to the Providence, does this mean we should revisit our small cell node design standards?
Yeah, so um, the small cell design standards were updated last year, so if we go with, um, I think for small cells, this is, this works, except we will replace the Wells Buck fixture detail in there, however, really, we're kind of covered right now if someone were to come in with an application because it's or per fixture as um, described by the engineer, town engineer, so we could say that in that location, we want the Providence if it works with our rollout that way. So I think we're covered for now. And then if we went to the other piece to this, that we would come back later, it would be our lighting code changes, which we just went to planning commission, you saw that in your packet. And so we'll come back to council on that. We're also changing some engineering standards and then um, we're still discussing internally, uh, the smart poles throughout town. If we want to see that, if it fits a need, um, that will be useful to the town, so we'll be, we're still working on that, so.
Yeah, I'd be interested to see how that comes out.
So so is everybody a, a yes or a no for um, buying the Excel polls? Okay, then uh, and then we want to stick to the five year timeline, said everybody, okay? There are your two questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Correct.
We're no.
Yes for a no.
It's a yes for five year and a no to Excel.
Exactly.
Okay, keep your own polls.
Yeah.
That was a terrible deal. Whose deal was it? Was that Gagan?
Thank you.
Was that a Gagan deal?
Negotiated, isn't it?
Who wouldn't even born when that thing was negotiated? All right, Upper Blue Sanitation District Housing Project. We have a celebrity in our midst today, Andy Carlberg from uh, Upper Blue Sanitation District. When's the last time you were here?
It's a very exciting project and um, but it, it, it's a collaboration between the Town of Barack and the Upper Blue Sand District. And um, but it can't happen um, unless the council is supportive of uh, approving an access easement on land that we own and also modifying an existing trail easement on a parcel that the Upper Blue Sand District owns. But basically, um, the memo spells out um, that the Upper Blue um, does want to provide uh, two single family units on their property. It would be accessed through a new um, driveway to be located on our property. But that driveway also um, serves us well by making some improvements to the Iowa Hill Trailhead. The other thing that's being amended is on the Upper Blue um, property, there is a very large area that's subject to a trail easement, I think they just didn't know exactly where the trail might make sense. So this further refines the location of that trail to a um, configuration that makes sense and is actually would work for a trail. So we're very supportive of it, um, my favorite thing is when somebody other than the town um, builds workforce housing. So um, we commend the Upper Blue Sand District for um, working on it and obviously Andy's here and Jerry's here. If you have any questions, we're all here to answer any questions you might have.
Will the new homes be on a, have a septic system?
It's going, it's going to the river, just the river.
Handy.
Any questions?
Oh, hey, great, good work, yeah.
Chance to do more housing there, I mean, you got two coming out of the ground possibly and, you know, it looks like from the map here, there's plenty of dirt, I don't know how flat it is there, but yeah, could, did you get to four, six? Yeah. Yeah, I just, I think with our housing crunch, I'd love to, if there's an opportunity there and a win win to work together to get a couple more.
We could do some sort of um, future design for access to two more homes above that. That would be good also.
Off the same um, access easement? Yeah, yeah.
That'd be great, yeah.
Let me explain a little bit about, about our involvement.
Need the microphone so that, or you, you can come down.
Thank you.
The sanitation district has been in the housing business for quite a while now, uh, for about twenty five years. We now have nine houses. Our goal is to house all of our employees because we feel that it's really important for the community that, that we have the housing. And our housing um, has been vacant sometimes, but when it's vacant, we rent it to the town or the county, the school district, so we rent it to public entities, basically. Um, and we rent it to the entity, not, not the individual, so that, that you are all able to, to um, to partake if they're vacant. And that's, that worked out very well and all, and these two houses are proposed to do the same thing, it's, we're not gonna get rid of them. It'll be available to rent to public entities, um, not private individuals, public entities for, for their, um, for their use also. It's worked out really well. The other, the other things that we've done for, for housing is that we have worked very closely with, with the town and the county on, on exchanging uh, fees. Where we, we give you um, a credit towards tap fees or service fees or whatever you want for something that you have that, that we might need, and we did this about five years ago for, for a water rights issue where we worked with the town um, uh, for a million dollar credit and I believe that's worked out okay. Okay. We're uh, also uh, working with Shannon and Rick and, and on another project that would, would give us at least the same amount or possibly quite more for the town's credit with the sanitation district. So uh, we've been very dedicated to, to, to housing and we don't, we don't work with private individuals on, on housing projects, we like to work with the governmental entities because you're the pre- planning agencies and you guys make the decisions and we would rather give you the money and you guys just um, disperse it as, as you will, so we've been very involved in housing and, and this is, this is one of our projects that we have on the books. This, the, um, the one at Iowa Hill, we've got a couple pieces of property in the Upper, Upper Blue that we're trying to develop also under the same types of conditions, so.
Thanks, Andy. Any other questions? Everybody good with the easement?
I think there'll be a condition uh, recorded on these properties that as long as they're, oh, that they have to be in ownership of the sand district, so they're exempt from uh, density as long as they're owned by the sand district, correct?
Yeah.
We're fine with that.
Good deal.
Cool.
And sort of get the um, entitlement process moving along and that's where actually, everything actually happens is through that entitlement process. But we needed to know you guys were on board.
Yeah.
Very good.
Thanks for coming by.
Thank you.
Housing. Take a quick five minutes and then go to uh, BGV.
That's what I do.
Are we ready?
Yeah.
Okay, we are back in session with uh, BGPPK eight Gold Rush Development Summary Analysis. Chris, whoever's leading this one.
So we have uh, your memo outlines and analysis, we're trying to summarize and get to as many uh, closure as much as we can on five of the six parcels for the, the old location of the East Peak Eight Hotel Site. We'll be discussed in more detail next Friday at a special meeting of the council at eight thirty here in the chambers. But the other five sites, we've already had discussions on with the council. So we've got a number of summary points, we still need some input from the council, we want to reach conclusion on many things we can. This is all building up to the actual deal points that will be included in the development agreement eventually. So um, Chris is actually gonna take you through these five sites today and at the end of each um, kind of short presentation on each site, then looking for council input. And um, with that, I'll hand it over to Chris.
So we'll lead off, I apologize, just due to the file size, there may be a little bit of a lag as I shuffle between slides here for the presentation, um, but we'll lead off on parcel one, otherwise known as the North Gondola Lot. And since this has now been decided that it's the preference of the council for it to remain parking in perpetuity, really with a lot of these items are just trying to cover all of our bases, so there isn't anything, it isn't looked at and needs interpretation down the line. With that in mind, um, we acknowledge that the, the current parking site does not meet code under uh, several, for several items as it's currently built, but this being a development agreement, that the council could require that lot to be brought back up the code, they could say it's fine as is, that's, that's how we desire or some hybrid in the middle, um, similar to what we did over at the South uh, Gondola Parking Lot. So with that, we did outline um, the current deficiencies and have, well, we'll go, instead of uh, circling back at the end, we'll actually ask the questions as you're discussing.
I'd like, I'd like to do these in pieces and, and put them, put them to bed one way or the other.
So with that, um, since there's the detail in there, I'll, I'll let you guys um, discuss and be happy to take feedback relative to this uh, this parcel.
Okay, uh, questions first?
So I have a question. Currently, the developer owns this property, right?
Currently it is.
Currently you own it and but you're gonna give it, or you're gonna give it, you're gonna sell it back or you're gonna deed it back to the Skieria after this is all over? but you're gonna give it, or you're gonna give it, you're gonna sell it back? Are you gonna deed it back to the ski area after this is all over?
Execution of the development.
Okay. At the execution of development agreement. So anything that we would decide to do on North Gondola would just become the next owner's responsibility? Or would it be your responsibility? Say we decided you gotta do lighting. Would you do that and then give that back to them? Or would you give it back to them and they do it?
We would deed the property back to Vale Resorts and as, as we purchased it.
Okay.
Graham Frank BGV, we would deed it back to Vale Resorts in the condition we purchased it. Further improvements would be down the road.
By them.
By them.
And would they be beholden to whatever those conditions are?
That's gonna be part of the deal that, well, it's gonna come out in the wash, right? If there's things that need to get done to that lot, they're, they're not just gonna automatically accept the responsibility to make those improvements. That's gonna be part of what they work out with you.
Also, Rick, it's, it's an if then Eric, right? So if a development agreement is then, we would be deeding the property back to Vale. If not, we would be falling back to look at development on the property.
That part I understand. I just, I wanted to sort of know what the, the timing was because we have talked with Vale Resorts for multiple years about doing some of these things. Now, I don't agree with all of them, but just to sort of get a, a idea of the landscape here. So. Okay. Any other questions? Let's discuss. Todd, you wanna?
Yeah, this is now a good time to jump into the parking question and.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's the, that's the big, that's the big question.
Question, right? Yeah. So with a hundred and forty-nine space deficiency, like, I guess, what are the options to make that up? Would it be change in the parking agreement, additional parking structure, change in zoning rules on how wide the parking spots have to be to fit more? What are, I guess, levers there to move forward? Or just say, hey, we don't, I mean, the ski resort's gonna want the one forty-nine, so.
Well, the question, well, they haven't been parking it. So do they really want the one forty-nine? Or are they happy with what? And how do we get to this point that we have a deficiency in parking?
That's based on looking at the amount of spaces that are striped out there today. It's not based on how many spaces that they're actually fitting in, in the wintertime, when a lot of times you can't see that striping and they're parking folks on the lot.
So what do we think they're parking?
Six hundred.
Six ten.
Do we think it is right now? I mean.
About five thirty.
Five twenty-five to five thirty, I think.
So five more that they're actually parking?
Eighty-five.
Eighty-five more.
And so we're sixty-four, if not including the, uh, striping of what is actually fit.
So the question is, how did we get, how, how did we get to that deficiency? Do we just not pay that much attention to do it? We park where we park? Gold Rush has only parked a handful of days out of the year and it doesn't really matter. Is that?
Yeah. And then, yeah, so I don't think anyone's ever brought it up as a, right, been something that's been monitored. The ski area and the town have both been generally comfortable with how parking has worked.
Okay.
So there's not.
All right. I'm sorry to interrupt, but they are meeting the intent of the parking agreement. Parking agreement says you will provide parking for this vehicle.
I think it's, it's important to remember the history at this point. You know, I mean, it's, that parking agreement came out of a fifteen million dollar investment by the town of Breckenridge cash into the Gondola. And that is what we received was that parking agreement because it was important at the time for us to have the parking that close to town because that was during a time when, when that traffic into town was very, very important to the businesses in town. So that was what it took to get the townspeople to support that level of investment into the Gondola. So, um, furthermore, I think the reason all of the code requires, not all, that the reasons much of the code was waived for those parking lots was because the intent at the time was to develop those lots with the parking structure.
That's what they kept telling us every time we asked.
Within five years, it was gonna happen within five years, within five years. So, um, you know, I, 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 I think we really need to, to keep that in mind in this discussion that, that, you know, we've, we've done our part. And now if we're gonna undo some of this agreement, then I, I think there needs to be some equity for the community. And what does that look like is, is where we're going with my discussion, not just how do we make it easy for this to happen? I, I, and not to make it hard either. I, I just think for me, I think the, the drainage issues and the quality of the water that's running off the lot, we need to be a code. Cause that's water running into our Blue River, our Blue River Basin. For drainage, it's just has to be code because that's an environmental issue. So that one, black and white. For screening and lighting, you know, I'd like to see us kind of mirror what we did on South Gondola. I don't think that does need to be the code. I don't, I think the code can be pretty tough on big lots like that to try to plow them and to try really have them be efficient. But that's an ugly lot, you know, during the summer. And, and you know, it's right at the entrance of town and it was never imagined to be like that for this period of time. And I think, you know, this, this is our last bite at the apple. I think we need to absolutely, you know, do some screening, do some li- lighting around safety. You know, I don't think we need to have it all lit up. I don't, you know, I don't envision islands in the middle of it or anything. I'm really thinking around the perimeter is to do some really nice screening. And then sufficient lighting to where our staff feels like it, it's, it's safe. Because this lot, whether we like it or not, will be used in the darkness. You know, when the days get shorter during the winter and the skier staff goes up in the dark and comes down in the dark. So, so I do think we need some lighting, but I don't want, I don't feel a need to overdo it. I don't think this needs to be punitive. The hundred and forty-nine parking spots deficiency is problematic. You know, cause we've got a huge amount of money invested in that agreement as a community. So I, I mean, I threw this out before, but I think a starting place with this discussion is, I think it's twenty-two thousand dollars a spot, which is what any other business in town pays for deficiencies of parking. Period. You know, if you are building, um, a new building in the core of town and you can't provide the parking that is required, you pay into the parking district and it's, I, I believe it's twenty-two. Is that right, Mark? Twenty-two thousand?
Right around twenty-two, twenty-three.
Yeah. So that's a starting place. Now, I think we could all work together and maybe reduce that number some. I, I think things that, that would really benefit the town would be to secure a long-term solution to the, uh, transit facility land, you know, which is leased currently from whoever owns the land, you know, and, and if we could get a, a more long-term solution to the land, in- including some ability to, to maybe, you know, if and when the time comes for us to, to improve the transit center in that whole area to, to maybe, you know, get sufficient land there to, uh, to really do that well. I think there would be real benefit in, in partnering with the ski area around, um, not eliminating their skier drop-off. This has been talked about, but eliminating their skier drop-off up at Peak Seven, Peak Eight. Again, the discussion of park, the parking and, um, Ski Hill Road intersection plays. And I think that, uh, is part of this discussion as well. And, um, I, I, uh, you know, I, I, you know, roundabout probably isn't gonna work, but I think we could lengthen the queuing lines, um, the turn lanes and, and make that a far more efficient intersection. So, so I thi- I think there's some area to work together on this stuff, but those are my thoughts.
Thanks, Dick. Next. Todd? Come back to me. Okay.
I have a question about the parking lot. So, um, has anything happened on the North Gondola, South Gold Rush and North Gold Rush Lot? As of today, that reduced the number of spaces, from ten-ten to eight-sixty-one?
No, I think at the time of the agreement, both the South Go, uh, all the lots, all three lots were dirt. And so we're going off of historical counts, which is, someone else asked the question of why we were comfortable with the number we have today. I mean, a lot of the people here present have done parking counts for years on it and they've always hit their numbers when they've been fully parked, but they just haven't been, you know, like in our, uh, the, to the dimensions of a required spaces by code.
So you're saying that when they were dirt lots and then they could park ten-ten and it's only since we've striped them that it's really.
And even, even since we've striped them, they, you know, a lot of times there's snow covering the lot. So they have attendance out there that are trying to squeeze every spot possible. I mean, it's a source of revenue where they'll have cars parked parallel along the, um, the, the drive lanes and then the little dirt, um, uh, elbow that sticks out kind of past the maintenance area probably picks up another forty spots. It's not paved and, and striped. So, I mean, we have the numbers that they have been parking those totals. There's, they're just not in spaces that are, you know, legally defined by our code.
How many days is everything full? Parking structure and all our lots full? Uh, you know, I know, you know, we know specifically, but in general.
That, that got, that lot is almost always full.
Is it?
It's the first to fill because it's the first one people see and it, it is almost always full. And it's almost consistently parked at, um, I think it was six-ten, he told us, right?
Yeah. And I think they.
They've got as high as.
Completely park all three, well, not really the south lot anymore, but the other two lots sixteen days out of the year.
So we're not, I mean, if somebody went in there and raced all those white lines and started fresh, you know, them, they could, we don't know what that number is, right? They could stripe it according to code. They could do.
Yeah, but we do have a code to help us calculate it.
Yeah. I mean, every, we know the width of every parking space. We know what every drive lane is supposed to be in between those rows and, uh, you know, I mean, they're required, the thing is they're required to park ten-ten. And they are parking it. So it's just, you know, can they, they might be, it might be an easy fix. They might be able to re-stripe it and it might work. The code, I don't know. I mean, they parked the cars there.
Right. So, so they're, they're parking the ten-ten on a regular basis. But what we're saying is.
I don't know that we know that.
What? Yeah, we do.
I don't, I have never counted. I mean, I don't.
Oh, we, there, we know the accounts are there. Yeah. It's not public information every day. So.
So, I mean, the, the problem is the original agreement was based on dirt parking lots. That's what the, I mean, that's where, and if you use code to, to paint lines, you're never gonna get those numbers.
Right.
No matter what you do, you won't get those numbers if you do it by, by, by painted code. So.
So continuing, we, we, we park ten-ten regularly, but now with the striping, we, you know, theoretically, we, we couldn't park ten-ten, but when the snow falls and the striping is covered, we can park ten-ten.
And that, that's consistent to some degree with our lots as well.
Yeah.
Because, and we don't have attendance, say in F lot, so it's probably not parked as efficiently as it could be. But you can park more people with attendance when you can't see the lines because as Chris said, they'll, they'll get them all lined up and put as many cars in there as they can. So whether we, whether it's striped for X number of cars or not in the wintertime, they're not parking in the spots. They're not parking in the line spots. And there are always attendants every day, always parking attendants.
Yeah, there's, there's always, there's always parking attendants because it's in their best interest, you know, to pay the hourly rate and squeeze a hundred more cars or seventy-five more cars at the, the price they're charging.
Attendants give out the, uh, car pooling code and all of that to the cars entering the lot.
Just one last point, then I'll let it drop. But this is an equity issue. Okay? When I did an addition on Macasa in nineteen ninety-three, we had sufficient parking. It was dirt. It was unpaved. It was unlined and we parked a lot of cars behind Macasa. When I did my addition, there was required parking. It was required to be paved. It was required to be striped. I bought in to the parking district for a lot of parking. And we got more on there when it was snowed on. Didn't matter. I paid based on the code. We're, we're being, if you guys remember the short-term rental discussion where we were accused of all kinds of favoritism. This is feeling like some of that favoritism. I think we have to follow the code. That's my thought.
If, 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 to, to charge twenty-two hundred for a hundred and forty-five, that's like a three hundred and nineteen thousand.
Forty million.
Three million, three hundred, something like that.
Oh, I thought it was twenty-two hundred.
Dick, I agree with you on bringing everything up to code. I mean, as staff laid out in the memo, uncertainties removed. This is gonna be a parking lot to the near foreseeable future. So lighting, landscaping, drainage, site buffering, I think. I'm with you on that. All of that, we should look to our code and apply to that. I think the difficulty within this discussion and just, there's not clarity, what are the numbers at? If it's based off the current striping versus what could fit to code with different stripings, I think not having that base level.
They're welcome to do that as long as it's code.
Eric Graham had a something he was hoping to.
Yeah, please.
So to the questions on the ten-ten, uh, the only place that one thousand and ten parking spaces comes is the fifteen-sixty in the two thousand and two and two thousand and three parking agreement, less the five-fifty credit that comes when, when the parking structure was built. Today, Vale Resorts parks six hundred and eleven spaces on the North Gondola Lot. On a busy day, two hundred and thirty-five spaces on the North Gold Rush Lot and one hundred and one spaces on the South Gold Rush Lot for a total of nine forty-seven. On a max day, nine forty-seven. So when we're doing the deficiency against ten-ten, there's nine forty-seven cars that go in there today, maybe to code, maybe not to code. But the ten-ten comes from, and that's why we use that number when we did the south, or I'm sorry, the Gondola Lots, Gold Rush Lots Master Plan Agreement. We were solving to the ten-ten to be in conformance with the two thousand and two parking agreement that says you have to park ten-ten on two, but not all three of the lots at the completion of the project. So that's why we looked at a parking structure on South Gold Rush, then North Gold Rush. And that's where we sit today, solving to that ten-ten as we look at it. But nine forty-seven is the max number of cars on any given day right now.
So you're planning to solve the ten-ten still?
Correct, to be in conformance with the two thousand and two parking agreement.
So what's the delta between the ten-ten and, and Dick's?
Sixty-three number.
Was that sixty-three?
Nine forty-seven to ten-ten.
Well, no, ten-ten is the, ten-ten's the code number. That's what they're solving to, right?
Yeah.
Correct.
Versus between what's actually parked and what's striped is sixty-four, sixty-three spots. And so, and, and looking at that, I, I think the, the agreement is about how many spaces are parked, you know, or how many cars are parked. And if they're parking six hundred and ten cars, that's what the agreement's based on. It's not, in, in my opinion, it's not about, it, in the parking agreement, it doesn't say parking, you know, ten-ten code spots or stripe spots. It's one thousand and ten cars. And so to me, uh, using that six-ten number, that six-eleven number for, for North Gondola makes, I think that's the prudent pragmatic way forward, uh, on this.
I think the other difference is the parking, um, attendance because while it is, I mean, while it is easiest and best to go with the code, you, you know, a private place doesn't have parking attendance every single day. And so you're probably, there's a bigger variance in the number of parking spaces that are allowed or that are being used at a smaller place.
I spoke my mind. I'm not gonna argue anymore.
Other comments on this piece?
I'm ready now, Eric.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think on the parking numbers, I'm, I'm in line with Jay there on like what's actually parked. To me, he seems sensible. Um, I hear where you're coming from on the, on the code piece. Um, you know, what's happening around the ground, I think is valuable. Be curious to know if you could update the code to reflect like, right, is it attended parked and, and that maybe gets you more spots? So I think that's, that's one thing to look at is, yeah, is there code language about attended parking lots? So that's one piece. On the landscaping and the lighting, um, I would love to see that river zone improve dramatically. Um, you know, on that, I guess that'd be the east side of the parking lot, you know, clean, on cleanup day, was in that zone with a couple of you and it was a, it was a disaster. Um, and you know, as you alluded to, that's kind of the, you know, it's a gateway to town. It's one of the first things you see as you're coming in. Um, so I think it's just an opportunity to grow and improve and really, yeah, make that piece of our town look better. From a lighting perspective, I remember when the, the traffic consultants were here, they talked a lot about kind of these pathways through town. So I do think, I don't want to see a bunch of islands in the parking lot, but I would love to see, you know, from somebody that does this for a living, like lighted pathways to make sure, hey, folks can get, you know, whether they're going to the transit center or whether they're going to the city market. Um, I think those are important to me and um, yeah, those are my thoughts.
I, I guess while we, we have you, um, someone else spoke to drainage. Any appetite for drainage improvements or?
Oh, a hundred percent, yeah.
Uh, yeah, I'm, I completely agree with the drainage. Um, I would like to only see safety lighting. I definitely want to minimize our use of lighting in areas that aren't necessarily being walked through. I mean, there's tons of parking in town that is fully lit at night. And so I don't know if that means we should, you know, close this parking lot at, at tonight parking. I just, I think we should be aware of how much extra lighting we are putting in this town. It feels to me like the switch from our older lighting to the newer lighting seems much brighter to me. I know that we're trying to do things that make it um, safe, of course, first and foremost, but also pay attention to that. But the new, the LED lights just seem very, very bright to me. So I would like to see minimized lighting, but certainly as you guys um, feel it should go in for safety. And then the landscaping, I think only screening um, is what I would support.
Anything there? Um, yeah, I agree with Kelly as far as minimalistic lighting and certainly about the drainage. I think that's something first and foremost, you know, and as far as lighting, uh, you know, I do think we need a breadcrumb, you know, kind of a, like, like the, the, the uh, consultant said, you know, kind of a, to direct people to town. But other than that, uh, minimalistic, I kind of agree with Jay secondary with Todd about um, the parking, I'm not too concerned about, yeah, I, I think that I'm okay with that.
Yeah, that. Last point, the numbers I'm a little more flexible with, but for staff's recommendation of bringing everything up to code. I um, I support that draining, lighting, landscaping. Within this agreement, how specific are we going to be or is it just pointing back to code? Because certain things that were mentioned, focusing the landscaping around the perimeter of the parking lot, I think would be great. Is that something that we can put into detail within the agreement?
Yeah, I think we'd want to have a section within there, it explains what we want for this parcel. Where we own this reference code, we want kind of the prescription outlined by council. And I think we can put that as a bullet within the development agreement. If we just want peripheral screening and landscaping, but not, no islands, minimal lighting, drainage improvements. I think we can write a bullet it, within the development agreement, has the exact prescription of what's expected.
Can, can we specify as far as, as far as landscaping, you know, kind of like a shrubbery that takes less water or kind of minimalistic uh, irrigation needs?
I mean, if, if that's a desire to get to that level, we can, or we can rely on, you know, what we recommend under the landscaping code.
Okay, alright, yeah.
And then finally with lighting, just making sure that we are um, dark sky compliant with what we're trying to do, that there's no contradictions between our parking light and standard and our dark sky goals.
Uh, I think it's great to hear, to get back to the history of this lot. And you know, the fact that we've been, the last twenty years, we've looked at it as going, as future development and been okay with it being what it is today, based on the fact that it was, you know, deemed to be developed at any point. And, and I think it's important to, to recognize the fact that we, we really only have one opportunity to what is anticipated to be an asphalt parking lot forevermore, right? Like this is, uh, is, I wrote down the same thing that came out of Dick's mouth of, you know, one bite, one bite at the apple, that's all we get to influence what happens on this large parcel of land that's at the end, entrance of the town. Uh, that being said, I, internal landscaping, um, and you know, twenty-five percent snow storage, i- i- it's just not realistic where we are right now and it's not a pragmatic way forward. But I do agree with uh, the buffering on the perimeter, uh, drainage. And, and I do think lighting's important. I think that we have a lot of workforce uh, that are in our restaurants that um, utilize the free after three in that lot and park and um, and walk over to the North Main Street businesses. Um, and I think that it's important to look for the safety of our, our workforce. And I can tell you how many times I've worked, I've walked over there and it's, it's pitch black, which is great for dark sky compliance, but I think when we're, when we're looking at specifically uh, twenty-two A is the interior landscape that I don't think should be applicable. Um, I did have a question about snow storage and what is currently utilized there. And is it just the banks or is it hauled off and is the town part of that or is that all on Vale?
On Vale, nice, yeah.
Um, and what is the status of the drainage currently? Is it, uh, is it deficient as far as we know?
There's no retention to our knowledge on site. It just kind of sheet flows.
Right into the blue.
But getting that drainage in, in line may impact the number of spaces as well, correct?
That's correct. I mean, we're looking today at, I mean, it's a fairly comparable size to the South Gondola. It'd probably be a similar kind of detention situation like we have at the north end of the south. So you would, you would lose some spaces by having a detention facility.
I don't think there's any. Todd, you were going to add?
To add in there that I, I, I think kind of gets a little bit overlooked, but you brought it up briefly, Dick, was um, is the stoplight there, right? Like I, I think as a community, that zone with the admin parcel and, and obviously the single family lots up uh, up by Peak Eight there in Timber Trail, plus with all kind of the, the changes going on in town that I think as a, a council, we've got to look at, alright, what are our options there? And that certainly, you know, I can appreciate from a, a deal perspective, it's got a pencil, right? So um, I, I'd love to see some options to improve ski hill as part of this. You know, I did see the, the, the graphic there that showed that, hey, a two, two-car traffic circle wouldn't fit. You know, I'd love to hear from somebody that knows more about engineering than me, would a one-car traffic circle work? What does that look like? What are the other phasing options there? Because to me, that's, that's part of the, the deal is, is, you know, we want to make sure that customer experience, the, the local experience and the guest experience is awesome there. And I think now's the time to address that as part of the whole mechanics of, so to me, that's parcel number seven on this.
Yeah, to that point, where they have, kind of, I think, just to give you a preview of uh, October sixth, where they'll talk about the East Peak Eight Hotel, the programming for that building, kind of the dimension, site plan, cucumber, cucumber gulch impacts, number three will be Ski Hill Road. It'll be one of the four major items. And then the fourth being Rump as it relates to it. So um, you know, at that meeting, we will spend a bit of time talking about Ski Hill Road traffic impacts and really how that spills out onto Park Avenue as well.
Cool, thank you.
Could we build the transit center discussion into that Ski Hill Road? Because they're very related.
Yeah, I think any, anything that we're missing here, obviously, we wanted, we want to discuss at a future point. We're trying to pick off as many things and that's why, um, you know, we have that matrix at the end. Is obviously that's not exhaustive, but we're really trying to keep track of what we've gotten consensus on, what's outstanding, what are the questions we need answered? So absolutely, we can talk about the transit center at the, at the future meeting.
Um, I agree with um, I, I think the drainage is the number one issue, followed by lighting. The, the landscaping in the summer is a big deal, but when they, when they berm snow, I don't know how that landscaping lives. So that, that has to be a discussion. You know, you're going to put a bunch of landscaping around the perimeter and then they're going to berm snow there because they don't haul. I don't think they haul. So there, there's a, we got to be careful what we do there and what we're going to make them do that, that won't survive. But the drainage thing is the biggest issue and I don't mind losing spaces for drainage. I do think that somewhere in the agreement, there needs to be a piece about the attendant. I think that's the, I think that's the um, the compromise between whatever that count is. If the count works better with an attendant, then they can't go to just pay parking with no attendant. So I don't know how you write that into the agreement or if you even can, but that's obviously very critical because without the attendant, you don't park enough cars. Now, I disagree that this is the last bite of the apple. We have a huge bite of the apple coming up with this five hundred parking spaces that we owe the Skiria down on Airport Road. That is actually a thousand cars and there needs to be a discussion that for some reason, the Skiria has not come forward to have with us. And if they're listening, they need to, because at some point, that needs to be resolved. Because at some point, when the town starts to build single-family homes out there on that property, they're going, the Skiria will lose half of that parking and they have not come forward with any kind of idea. So I think there still is opportunity to, to talk about parking even once this gets deeded back to the Skiria about, there's a larger parking discussion that's being ignored right now. And I will tell you that a council down the road, whether it's the next one or two more, is going to get stuck with this problem. So that, that needs to be contemplated by them. Um, and then the other thing that Skiria needs to be involved in, which is probably the biggest problem up at Ski Hill Road, is skier drop-off. That is the biggest single driver of the, of the traffic rush in the morning and the traffic rush in the evening, is people either dropping off or picking up their kids from the teams and, and all that stuff. So, and it's inadequate up there. And I don't know how we get, that's sort of outside the scope of this also. But when we talk about this at the October sixth meeting, that, that's a huge piece of this. And I know they've said they don't care, they're not going to, they're not going to change that, but that, there's got to be some lever there. Um, other than that, I, the rest of the stuff that, like I said, the drainage, site buffering and landscaping it, it really needs to depend on snow stack. Um, and then the lighting, I agree with all the comments that it needs to be um, not overly done, but there needs to be something out there. Okay. Moving on.
Okay, well, it looks like we uh, picked up most of the questions from parcel two. Just a FYI that we'll just come back to discuss workforce housing, kind of the overall um, intensity and look at a future meeting. And then also we'll need to talk about um, pedestrian crossing options in the context of the workforce housing discussion. Um, so moving on to parcel three, uh, which is the South Gold Rush Lot and just looking at, um, scroll here, it's probably take a minute to let you up, if I can find my cursor. We, we previously had discussions related to wetlands on uh, parcel three. Um, just with the quick turnaround, uh, the BGB team did submit kind of a revised design that we, uh, I believe Shannon sent out to you this morning. So we don't really expect free to fully digest that diagram. But we did have some um, comments beyond wetlands as it pertains to tree buffering along Park Avenue um, on the site. And we, for context, we're looking at it compared to what was proposed at the March seventh planning commission meeting, which was uh, the last site-specific review we had against the, the gondola lots master plan for the previous um, application. So from that um, packet, the applicants provided this tree cover um, plan where the dark uh, trees were what were proposed to be removed and the light green trees were what was proposed to be retained on the site. You can see most of the dark green was really being taken out for the expansion of the roundabout. Um, and then other roadway improvements along Woods Drive. There's a pretty large stand of mature trees in this area, just kind of beyond the right of way. That was a concern, that the planning commission was concerned about losing under their original kind of layout of duplex units. Um, the scroll to the next one, which is that updated plan that BGB has supplied where their building footprints are outside of the twenty-five-foot wetland zone. But the thing that Steph notes is there is a duplex building now programmed really kind of right in the center of those trees as well as um, some of the recreation amenities o- over there. Um, so we still wanted to at least have that discussion about uh, tree buffer along Park Avenue in the context of the South Gold Rush Lot or otherwise known as parcel three.
Okay, questions first?
So does that tree removal, um, is that viol- in violation of any of our code?
It was in violation of the previous master plan per, um, interestingly enough, it was under the building height section that the master plan was writ, or wrote, the retain buffering on the west side of Park Avenue. The, the kind of screen, the impact of having buildings developed on that site, not only in the site, but also on the context of where the parking garage or where housing is now approved. And I can flip back uh, there, but that's, that's always something that we've really tried to emphasize. If we're having a large parking structure on the North Gold Rush Lot, a great way, in addition to being kind of into the hillside, to mitigate the, the look of that size by retaining the mature tree buffer and the same thing here on, on parcel three. Um, we understand that this site is, um, it's interesting in the sense that there's currently a hard surface parking lot where that's primed to be redeveloped. There's really no environmental constraints. But in the other kind of two-thirds of the lot, we either have mature trees or we have wetlands. So um, we're trying to have that balance act in, in terms of what should be developed and what really needs to be preserved on the site.
Probably the other thing to note is this revision, as you probably saw already, is moving the buildings all out of that twenty-five-foot wetland um, setback area, which was one of the things that um, council brought up at the last meeting. So it is um, an improvement from a wetland protection standpoint. Um, so at this point, staff's more just focused on the tree retention issue. And if the council feels that's uh, something that's a concern.
So where, where's the, where's the, is there a tree overlay that you could put on top of this?
I don't have it. This is a, a brand-new plan. I think at the, at BGV, based on they did the tree survey before, could provide that in the future. So we're trying to toggle back between, you know, two plans that don't speak to each other.
Say it's difficult to tell you my opinion if I don't know. Let me just, as a, as a for instance, I'd say lose the pickleball court and move the home if you can save some trees. So, but without knowing where that stand is, I can't really tell you anything.
Yeah, per the other one looking at, it's approximately right here, kind of between where this one, I think, could be shifted. Having a, having a duplex here is really the, the kind of the critical.
Okay, there it is, okay.
Does this help?
Um, possibly.
Yeah, we need to have that.
Yeah, I think like the pickleball court is probably roughly here where my cursor. And then the stand is kind of right in the center of that unit and then partially on the edge of the.
I assume they're going to want to screen the two townhomes because they have back decks that are looking at the highway.
Yeah, the, we had another email today. I mean, all this stuff is so fast-moving, Graham sent out based on, you know, reading this memo and they're suggesting, you know, doing a berm with substantial landscaping. And I think that will be ultimately their ask. I, I don't know if Graham wants to add anything at this point.
So Eric, you're exactly right. Our plan would be down on that corner to build a substantial berm. Blue, uh, a lot of vegetation, including a bunch of blue spruce. So they're more adverse to the beetle kill and the other things that are killing those, that stand of trees that is there now. And also would help with that water. And also would help with that water retention. That's coming down to that corner at a higher velocity to keep pushing it back towards the site. So that would be our plan behind those townhomes, A to screen them and B to do that robust landscaping across the top of that berm.
Other comments?
You said it, it's, I mean, it's hard to comment on it with getting this information so late. Um, other than just reiterating the importance of, of, uh, maintaining existing mature tree stands. For screening, I, I mean, we've said that before and I reiterated that that's important. On, on both sites, on both, um. Two and three.
Chris, is there a difference between the total square footage of the duplexes in this plan versus? The prior application?
There is, and that was one of the things that we pointed out that kind of is a result of the commission comments at the. Um, I believe the, the first preliminary hearing last time. They started out with a very similar footprint to what you saw at the last one where it was in the, the circle and based on that. They reduced it down to the, the number of units that are. Shown on this March seventh plan to preserve more mature la- um, landscaping and also. Be out of the wet, wet lens as much as possible. So that, yeah, I did show the numbers in here. Um, you know, right now they have sixteen units proposed at forty-eight thousand square feet. Previously, it was five buildings. With, uh, just over thirty-four thousand square feet on the site.
It's about eleven thousand.
Or actually almost, almost fourteen thousand.
Is that right?
Fifty-three percent difference?
Yeah, it's fif- it's fifty-three percent. I mean, they were, again. They shifted that over across the street and, you know, kind of pumped that density. Um, and so it was going someplace else, but now I think with their. When they're looking at their programming, they obviously. They, they want the units for sale down here and they, they don't maybe necessarily need the density somewhere else as much.
I get, I totally get that and I. I really think the recreation area, if it's driving any of this, needs to go away. That would, without, without making any other comments, because I don't really know where the tree stand is, and until I do. I would say that if you want to keep those units, you'd need to keep some of those trees at least and. Honestly, having a pickleball court on the highway, I just don't even think is a great idea.
That's what I was gonna say is.
Next step. You're gonna get a tennis player that buys that. All the time. Other comments about this, Jay, Carol, Jeffrey?
I have no more, and I could be ma- better opinion when I see the overlay.
I'm really happy that they look at getting it out of the wetlands and the twenty-five foot setback. I think that was a big win.
I agree with that.
Well, I think we can request that they come back with.
Yes.
Revised.
For the next meeting.
Um, maybe not for the next one, but I think one where we're talking about the housing, where we'll probably maybe link in the pedestrian crossing, we can link. Really the Park Avenue.
Just do an overlay with, you know. Current conditions and what, what's planned.
All right, well, moving along, um. Again, um, parcel four we'll discuss on October sixth, parcel five, we just kind of recap. It sounded like there really weren't any. Major issues with those. Those two single family homes, I did want to point out.
We have some question about. The road and. Does the county plow that or do we? I feel like I ask a question, I don't know that I, I.
What did you ask for?
Yeah, I was, I was curious because these two would be in town, but the neighbor. The neighbors are in the county. So I did, and the county is dirt, right? And this is gonna be paved. So, so my question was sort of related to how is that? How do, what's the, what's the operational? Plan?
I, I think that what was suggested was to have a, a shared private driveway that would be built to the town standards that would be maintained by the two. Homeowners, so we wouldn't be burdened with this little road.
Makes sense last time they would.
Is that what, okay, I couldn't remember what the resolution was, right?
Put my cursor, so zoom in on it because that area. Is actually within the Peak Eight base area, which already has existing density. This does not have the ability to have single family. That's the only thing that would need to be. Modified specific to the site, but you can see the little triangle, how it touches the point on Timber Trail. That little green triangle, uh, green triangle to the right of it is the, the two lots there within the master plan area.
Right. Any other questions on that one or comments? Everybody good with?
Moving on to, uh, parcel six or final parcel of the day, uh, leading off with the rezoning. Um, there's really two ways that we can go about. Transferring density and in creating the single family home sites here. There's the classic rezoning, which would adjust. The land use guidelines. The other would be to modify the existing master plan through the development agreement. Both ways are, are acceptable under the code. Previously, when. We laid out all the, the sites and the existing master plan, which is showing up on the screen here. It was done through the development agreement and pursuant to, uh, policy thirty-nine. Um, we've talked to the, the applicants since this memo went out a little bit. They are strongly in favor of just handling it through the development agreement and, um, modifying the master plan. Which is still vested for another, uh, approximately two years, just to save that extra step of having to. Um, do a rezoning. Um, the time and effort, uh, Christie Matthews Lydell, who's representing them. Um, may have something to add in regards to why they prefer that and why they believe that's the correct, correct approach.
Hi there, Christie Matthews Lydell, um, for the record. Looking at policy thirty-nine regarding master plans, it's an absolute policy. There is a provision subsection L five under master plans. That allows, that contemplates the situation. When the underlying land use district guidelines conflict with. Terms of the master plan. L five, which has been invoked in the past for all the other master plans for peak seven and eight says. If the master plan was in existence prior to nineteen. Ninety-four, if it is vested, if it is in conflict with the underlying lugs. And there's significant public benefits involved, then the town council via development agreement. Can authorize the planning commission to review and approve. Um, modification to a master plan that's not in compliance with the underlying lugs. So I'm saying the policy thirty-nine specifically contemplated such a situation and gave us the process for it, so we don't believe. That the underlying lugs need to be modified. The underlying lugs haven't been modified any time in the past when the master plan's been modified. Thank you.
Thanks, Chrissy. And staff doesn't have a.
No, um, you know, like, I think it's LED forty right now is where Timber Trail is and. The densities there are not consistent with what's on Timber Trail. So, um, yeah, it. There's been precedent set in the past. We would just need to memorialize this in the development agreement. To say, you know, that we're gonna go this route, we're just gonna go through the master plan. And, um, that the provisions of land use districts are not applicable, so.
Hey, hey, Mark, was Timber Trail previously in LED forty as well, or was that in a different? Land use district?
It was previously in land use district forty. We just didn't, didn't touch the district when it came into the, the master plan area.
Okay, any questions on that or comments?
Got one question.
Yeah, please.
Is there any risk here from a land use guideline master plan perspective that we need to think about? With whatever path we go forward here on this, as it relates to STRs and what we've got in place there, we okay with?
Make sure my new mic is on, um, just wanna get used to one, I can get a new one, so, uh, no, I think we're okay with that. Um, the STRs, we use the underlying land use guidelines as guidance, but it wasn't shoe rezoning. Um, and I'm comfortable, we can make sure we convene later and. Get our ducks in a row, but I'm comfortable with the way that this is being proposed.
They've also said that they're, they're okay with this not being part of Zone One.
Great, yeah.
Yeah, the other thing, either process, land use district change or master plan is gonna require public hearings, testimony, so. All the neighbors are still gonna get an opportunity to participate either way.
Cause Timber Trail's Zone Three, correct? That's, that's a neighborhood.
I think we did Zone One for Timber Trail.
Timber Trail is? Is it okay?
Yeah, cause it's right, yes, it is, yeah.
Alright, so they agree that to Zone Three?
Good right, yeah, they're re- reaffirm that Zone Three into the master plan.
Thank you.
I think, uh, in parcel six, I just. Seeing the notes that, um, there's a possible ask for variance on slope. On driveways and, uh, lot slope and, um. Building site and I, I think that is understandable. I'd just love to put some guardrails on there to say, you know, if. If we're allowed, if they're allowed to build that eight percent slope. What is the variance that we're willing to accept, um, on that?
Had some preliminary, there's another, Christie's credit from the discussions, she's really trying to think of anything that in the future. And then also talking to Shannon Smith, we acknowledge that there were some waivers in the existing Timber Trail, um. Where I think it's a half a percent or a percent higher in Timber Trail Drive and then, um. Not sure if any of the driveways got waivers, but acknowledge it's a very similar condition and, um. Would likely, there's a good chance it may need some waivers, and then also there's the provision for a, a dead end road. Um, that it's, it shouldn't exceed a certain length. And previously, they had to make sure that all the homes were sprinkled. Um, you had the, uh, turnaround that was sufficient for red, white and blue. And, um, kind of all this other standard stuff for having a road that's longer, and this would just be a continuation that we'll get to in a minute, talking about access.
I'm okay with the variance, as long as it doesn't exceed the variance, it's already in. Timber Trail. Yeah, me too.
And I. It's done with Timber Trail as well.
Done with Timber Trail and I, you know, the variance is good because it sometimes avoids the big retainage. Which, you know what that's been like in the Highlands? I mean, sometimes we just get too much retainage to, to meet a percentage. Anything else on this part?
One, six in general?
No, just on this first piece, he's gonna go to the next part now.
All right, well, we'll keep rolling here to, uh, access. Uh, we sent out the email to you a week ago, but we also thought for the public, we should really reiterate the point that we are. Um. That access to the parcel, parcel six was contemplated in the Timber Trail sub, um, specifically. With, um, track A being part of that, which is even a higher level than having a, an easement by having a track dedicated to it. And it seems like the, the language is very clear that it is access for future development on the adjacent parcel, which is partial, parcel six. The subsequent Timber Trail filing, uh, two. Also, uh, dedicated track A one, a much smaller parcel for the same purpose. And the original track A was not impacted by the, the second, uh, subdivision. So with that, we're still recommending that, um, we get to the. Here's track A right here off of the current cul-de-sac.
Move your cursor again.
Right here that you have highlighted in the red box.
Okay, alright, right.
But this, this parcel is currently owned by Vale Resorts. And, um, seems pretty clear, both from the intent of the plat notes, the labeling on the plat, as well as reading through, um. The staff reports for the Timber Trail subdivision that was, that. Future development was contemplated on the next parcel and would be accessed. Uh, at the end of the existing Timber Trail Road.
Questions? Comments?
So that's a hard and fast. Finding.
Well, it's permitted legally that the grant access, but it's still at your discretion of how you would like access to be provided. It's the recommendation of staff, we think it would, would get to the, um. Concept here. That, you know, with the grades and everything, we think it makes more sense to have the road continue and provide access. Off the existing Timber Trail Drive versus having a secondary road that would ha- be steeper, have more site disturbance. Uh, you know, and have to wrap around the maintenance building.
But it was suggested that that was a dirt main, you know, is meant to be a dirt trail. I, you know, foot access, and that is not the case.
No, what was stated, I, I did not hear the statement at the. At the previous night meeting, I was made aware of it, but from reading that tract. Go back to it here. Is a specific tract and then the, the skis meant it's, it's would function similar, there, there'd really be two options. You could either build a bridge. Or you could have a situation similar to the Nordic Center where you have a, a road cut through and you'd have to take your skis off and walk across the road. I think those would be the, the two options. It doesn't say that it has to main, there's nothing there that says it has to be. You know, a ski trail through that in perpetuity or a dirt trail. Uh, but it does very explicitly state that there, it's a, a track that's designed for access to the adjacent parcel. Um, right here.
Is there an updated plat that shows, the, cause the, the way it sits on the ground is like lot eighteen's above that cul-de-sac. Is that an issue at all? Like I, I believe, like if you go back to the.
We can get the updated plat. Or the, this, the next filing, which. Which has, um, the four other lots that are adjacent to Trig V's. Um, but you, you can see this, it's hard to see on the screen here, but this is ghosted in, which means that. Nothing that's ghosted was touched by this plat, nothing is, changes from the first filing.
Yep.
Um, with, and then this is the small little. Additional tract A one that they, they put in for good measure. To provide access.
Super, yeah, great. Thanks for explaining that.
Everybody agree with Steph?
How would you line him in the road?
Yeah.
Alright. Keep it going here and to bring back up the, the concept diagram. Uh, next up is home size. And previously, um, the council stayed the concern with some of the smaller. Third acre lots, I'll try and make my cursor visible here, accommodating the, um, maximum home size of seventy-five hundred square feet. That's been proposed by the applicant. We really put two options, we're not. Not opposed to looking at other ones in front of the council, but, um, the first one, we looked at some of the smaller lots in Timber Trail and what was currently. Developed. There was a point three four acre lot and a point three five. And both of those lots were developed with homes with the living space and garage being just over six thousand square feet. That amounts to one point two five FAR, and to give you is the quick overview and FAR or floor area ratio. If you have a number, um, have, uh, to the right at a smaller, that means that. The size of the development is approximately the same size as the land, so if you have a one to one, that means your home is the same size as your parcel size. If you have a larger number, that means. There's more land relative to the size, so it's, it's counterintuitive, um, if you're not used to looking at it. Uh, we've looked at also the neighborhood as a whole, and it has a FAR of one to three point five, so it's a little bit less intense. Than that one to two point five that we see on the smaller lots. So looking at kind of the character. So looking at kind of the character, we thought similar to what we've done in the home size policy under the density section. We have both a maximum home size and we also have a appropriate FAR in case there is a smaller lot. So we thought that using the average from Timber Trail might be a acceptable starting point for negotiation. Um, of one to one point three five. We also thought, looking at some of these parcels. It, it might not be a bad idea to combine some of them, or you know, just change the lot lines. Then you would have all, all lots that are over a, a half acre. And um, and then just be limited by the seventy-five hundred square foot if the, the council. But those are two potential options. We're also willing to listen to other suggestions from the council.
Chris, um, in previous subdivisions, what have we typically done? Have we done a minimum lot size or do we usually go by the floor area ratio?
Usually, you know, under. You know, under um, we've done so many, there have been like master plans or developments and. And I'd say for large lots, they typically range from a half acre on the smaller side to sometimes, you know, let's say two acres. There's probably exceptions that are over that. And then combined with building envelopes to try and maintain tree buffer and sensitive areas. We didn't really have a home size in a lot of them, um, because of that building envelope. But as we've progressed, um, some of the more recent ones, we did start instituting at least above ground home size. And then for the lots that did not have building envelopes, um, we went back and in two thousand eight, did the home size ordinance. To try and get some control on lots that were just governed by setbacks. And so both of these are particularly the FAR, FAR approach is very similar to that home size. Strategy.
And, and this is, this is all kind of contemplated for twenty lots. If there was less lots, would that kind of change that whole Feng Shui?
Yeah, that's why. I, I think if we combine some of the lots, you know, that second option, let's say um, there's six. You know, currently six third acre lots, if those were all brought to, you know, point six, you would have it brought down to uh, seventeen lots. You would reduce um, you know, three lots. And I know the applicant has said before that there is some, there is some give, um, in terms of the number of lots. I mean, it's not infinite, but I think. You know, that probably is within the, is within the range if that was preferred. Um, you know, Mike's, Mike's not here tonight, but I'm not sure if Graham would have any uh, input on that.
So Jeffrey, to that point, we continue to work with Timber Trail. So we're working on the site buffering the road. We know that we will consolidate some lots just to maintain the requisite buffering to keep them happy. And as we continue to rejigger through that process, that'll change and reduce the lot numbers, you know, from that twenty number down. Um, where we land will be dependent on how that process goes and then obviously feedback from you guys. But yes, we see that consolidating to a, a lower number of lots as we get to the completion of this.
Cool, thanks.
Chris on a half acre lot, what's a floor area ratio of one to two point five?
Purposely didn't bring my phone here to get this tracked in.
Driving at. So I would like to maintain as, as close to Timber Trail as possible. So if on the small lots in Timber Trail, there are six thousand feet, I don't think a seventy-five hundred square foot home belongs on. A third of an acre. And that's a one point two five, right? So I'm just curious what it is for a half an acre, so that if you could say. I'm just trying to make the language easy enough that it doesn't have to be that, it's either seventy-five hundred square feet or one point two five. Whichever's smaller or what, what, you know, whatever.
Yeah, I, I think that we were, we were even advocating going to one point three five, just.
Right, yeah, which is, that's fine too, yeah, whatever.
Which is the average of Timber Trail.
Yeah. So what's one point three five on, on a third of an acre then? Let me ask you a bunch of math questions. Do we need to get Dave down here or? Came up there. They've already has the answer, he's just not going to tell you.
Yes, think about that.
We, we could bring it back to you.
You know, you don't have to figure it out now, I'm just.
I kind of like what Graham said. I mean, they're working with the, the residents of Timber Trail on buffering. And their intention is to consolidate some lots. I, I'd, I'd like to wait and see what they, you know, what they can accomplish with their neighbors first. And, and then maybe we weigh in.
I think if we give them some guidance beforehand, it might help them get. If they, if they know that we want a smaller, if we want a, a.
Okay, yeah, because I.
You know, you know what I mean? Yeah. Any other comments?
Uh, just curious on the opinion on, staff's opinion on lot nine. And the um, irregular shape lot and what, what your recommendation is. Is that part of, does that change with consolidation? Are we okay with that flag? Wha- what's that standpoint at the moment?
Think our recommendation was to make some revision to that, so it wasn't so obviously like a plague type lot. To get it more in conformance and I think, you know, that's something we can work with the applicants on.
And on lot nine, can you talk about what is the, the green dotted line, the ski trail allotment? Is that something that's memorialized in any way or that's something that are just were planned to keep?
Yeah, right now, I don't know, from any of the documents I've seen, I don't know it's memorialized, but I do know. That is the, the ski access, it's, it's kind of hidden coming off of Trigvies and there's a, there's a run cut through there. Um, and then it goes down, you know, adjacent here and really you could take it all the way to the front of the neighborhood. But just looking at its placement, I mean, thinking if we wanted a, an envelope for that home site. And there's, you know, probably negotiations with those neighbors in Timber Trail where they probably don't want the home directly in their backyard. It would, it would make more sense to have the home site moved up, you know, in that area. And that just happens to be right where the, the cut is, which also isn't necessarily bad. If you have the home site where there's already existing trees cut out, you just have to realign that, that ski access, which I think would be to everyone's benefit.
So I'll just say, this is, this is a conceptual attempt at, you know, the subdivision's going to happen at a later date. And we'll work out these exact boundaries and all that then to meet our code.
Are you going to do?
Disturbance envelopes? Okay. Other questions or comments on this? Okay with letting them start to work out home size detail?
I think it's preferable because, you know, I just seeing that ski trail. And I mean, he's cutting off access for two very, very expensive homes to the ski areas. So I, I think to strongly support and encourage the process that they're embarking on now. And, and working with their neighbors is probably the first step before we get too involved for me.
Eric, we think at three point five, it's sixty-two hundred square feet. That's what both Chris and I came up with, but we'll verify that.
For pressure on, on the floor and to do.
No, nothing that, uh, we figured you checked it.
Yeah. Okay, next. Yeah, go ahead.
Or I read, what, other stuff on six now or?
Uh, no, you have more, more on six with.
Yeah, with.
Uh, go ahead, Chris.
I was gonna say, the next one is lot shape and dimensions, but if you have.
I don't care about that one. We already set precedent on that one. I mean, I, it's got to work and, and the, the building envelope's got to work and then the setbacks have to work, obviously. But just for the sake of a subdivision, having right angled lots, I'm not as worried about that.
Yeah, it really seems like it's that lot nine, it's the only one that's kind of obviously weird. The rest of them are within reason based on the road alignment, so.
It may challenge you.
Um, yeah, really our final, um, we touched on the open space dedication, which. Um, you know, the applicant agreed to pay the ten percent fee in lieu, which is required by the, the subdivision company. Um, we pointed out, we wanted to get an appraisal done. Um, from talking to Christie just before the, the meeting, she did point out it is. The code says it's determined by the actual like assessment by Summit County, unless there's a appeal of that. I mean, we, I think at the last meeting, we thought the best way to determine what the value is of the, it's based on the unsub, unsubdivided land. Is to get an appraisal because that factors in. Really a lot of parameters. You know, we've already reached out to an appraiser and talked it through a little bit. They, they understand that there's some future development, but it's also raw land. It's also has no density, would have to be transferred. So they're looking at it from. A bunch of different angles versus if we just went, you know, with the Summit County assessor, they're probably looking at it as just. Ski area.
A developable ski area land, yeah, which not.
I couldn't support that. I, I personally would like to see the town get an appraisal. Oh, I mean, and the applicant could get one too, and we could look at both of them, but I. There's just too many variables here. I'm a little uncomfortable just basing it off the applicant's appraisal. There's just a lot of variables.
That, that's from having the discussion with the praiser last week, that's really what they identify is that we really have to look at it from. Multiple of angles and we also just thinking about the timeline of between today. And when that would potentially be subdivided, we think it, again, it should be at the time of subdivision versus doing it at the time of the development agreement. And then finally, uh, just touching on water service, uh, we don't have actually on this map. Uh, where the water tank is located, but probably many of you have seen it as you ski down four o'clock run. Um, that is the water tank that serves all the um, the water really at the base of P Gate. And the Timber Trail neighborhood and anywhere else that has um, water service in this area. We just point out by uh, adding to development from talking to Public Works. That uh, they generally feel that there would be enough capacity to supply water to what is contemplated in this entire proposal. But it would have to be augmented with pumps to probably fill that tank more often, which does have um. You know, uh, energy costs associated with electricity than just ongoing maintenance. Um, they did recommend that we um, do just a hydraulic analysis, just to ensure that this is okay. And they recommended that that would be something that would be paid for by the applicant, um, just to, to make sure that we're a hundred percent comfortable. Their assumption is correct.
I agree with that. It is our standard operating procedure, the water always pays its own way. And development always makes sure that they pay the way that the rest of the system doesn't have to pay for new development. So I think that's important that that gets done.
So that, those are the items we have for you tonight. We, again, we do. We did have the, the summary table here, we'd be happy to take any questions related to anything we have in there. Um, we're really trying to get this as thorough and just so we can touch base on the table at every meeting. You know, because we're really trying to keep this moving and, and come to as many consensus points as early. So we can actually start working on the draft for the development agreement um, between the two parties.
And there's just a couple of things in the summary table I wanted to point out. One is that um, at the very end, we talk about getting densities for, need to understand exact densities for each area. So that's all going to be identified here and it'll really start shaking out next week's meeting. When the exact square footages and that are, are shown for the parcel four site. And then we'll see, and then with that, then we can get the numbers for everything else and how everything's going to move around. From those um, units that are on North Gondola Lot right now, where they're going to end up being transferred and all that. So we'll be able to have a much clearer picture when that happens. The one thing we kind of skipped over and we're, we're trying to just be, address these issues now. And identify things we think need to be addressed in the development agreement, obviously. So they don't become, if the council is comfortable with the direction we're going, a stumbling block when they get to planning commission. The one issue we identified that we didn't discuss was on parcel two regarding some potential relief. From policy seven R site disturbance. And so parcel two is the um, is a parking structure. Um, right now, as proposed, um, that is gonna entail. Fair amount of earthwork disturbance into the hillside. That's, yeah, okay, Chris is going to move over. But anyway, um, to the extent of moving about seventy feet further into the hillside from where that structure is right now. Where the parking area is right now. So um, there's a lot of things we want to balance here because there's obviously a limited amount of space there for parking. We also, staff feels really it's important to preserve that tree buffer out by Park Avenue. And uh, so in, in, in our minds and looking at this, we may want to provide some limitation. On how many negative points can be associated with um, disturbance. Because you know, the planning commission may see this and go, whoa. And you know, so um, we need to talk this through with the applicants more and come back to you guys. But I just wanted to make you aware that that's a deal point we probably would need to address.
So we'll put that in the develop, development agreement that that's already been.
Yeah, there's some limitation on points, whatever we come up with.
We'll, we'll discuss that at the meeting, um, probably two meetings from now, where we'll come back with the housing. The crossing, the tree canopy survey for parcel three and then the hillside disturbance. So it'll really just kind of be a, a gold rush, primarily gold rush focused meeting, along with probably if there's any other loose ends.
Yeah, I think it'll be important to understand how high that cut will be, right?
Yeah.
So I, you know, whenever it does come back, back, I think it's important we understand that.
It's a great point.
That's it from us, thank you.
Yeah, you have something to add? Fine, I, I thought this was a great report. I really appreciate it. This is a super helpful and, and that the table was really good. I, I would love to see another column that is, you know, consensus conditions maybe. Yeah, or just conditions on each parcel or deal points, however you want to call them, things like. You know, maximum building size, which includes garages. Parcel six is agreed to, to remake, to be in um, in short term rental zone three. You know, all of those type things that we're talking about. That um, you know, these processes get quite complicated and go on sometime and sometimes they're forgotten. So I think if we can capture as many of those details that are agreed to in these meetings, in these um. In this grid, it'd be really helpful.
I think that's a great suggestion moving forward and really credit to Shannon for uh, for putting, recommending the matrix.
Boss.
Well, this was really good. Thank you for doing this.
Okay, anything else? Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we're going to move to executive session. I do have this.
Do you need a quick break?
Yeah, let's take.
We are going to be in here for a while.
Are we gonna?
Why don't?
We're gonna get dinner, our way through?
Do a couple of the exec sessions and grab dinner or? You don't want to eat this early, do you?
We're not that old yet.
The town council go into executive session. Person went to CRS twenty-four, six, four, oh, two, four E for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters. May be subject to negotiations, developing strategies for negotiations. And or instructing negotiators concerning five parcels of property that the town is in the process of negotiations for acquisition. And or may be interested in acquiring for open space purposes. Roll call.
Mayor Mamular?
Yes.
Pro Tem Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckman? Councilmember Bergeron?
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton?
Yes.
And councilmember Savi?
Yes.
I move the town council going to executive session CRS twenty four six four oh two four E for the purpose of determining positions relative to matters may be subject to negotiations, developing strategies for negotiations and or instructing negotiators concerning an opportunity for the town to partner with Summit County School District for the purpose of developing workforce housing. Roll call.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Bergeron? Councilmember Carlton?
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sade?
Yes.
All right, I move the town council going to executive session under section twenty four six four oh two four F one CRS of the Colorado Revised Statute for Personnel Matter and under section twenty four six four oh two E CRS for the purpose of matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategies for negotiations and or instructing negotiators specifically to discuss the expiration of the existing contract with the town attorney in terms of proposed reappointment. Roll call. Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman? Councilmember Bergeron?
I guess.
Carlton?
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sade?
Yeah.
And I move the town council going to executive session person went to CRS twenty four six four oh two F one for the purpose of personnel matters specifically can to conduct an interview. Shannon Haines for the position of town manager person to CRS twenty four six four oh two E to discuss matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategies for negotiations and or instructing negotiators. Roll call.
Mayor Mamula?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Owens?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman? Councilmember Bergeron?
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton?
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin?
Yes.
Councilmember Sade?
Yes.
The spoon. For the sake of transparency, town council with Rick Holman, Shannon Haines and Kirsten Crawford and for the open space acquisition portion of the executive session additionally with staff members, Scott Reed and Ann Lowe discuss the following topics in executive session. Negotiations and positions related to five parcels the town is potentially interested in acquiring for open space purposes. Council instructed negotiators and any final decision will be made by the town manager. Negotiations and positions relative to an opportunity for the town to partner with the Summit County School District for the purpose of developing workforce housing. Council has instructed negotiators negotiators and any final decision will be approved by the council. Town council has conducted an interview with Shannon Haines, discussed the proposed terms of a contract with Shannon Haines. Council has instructed negotiators to finalize the proposed details of her contract, which will be present presented to council for approval by resolution on October twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. We need to say anything about you?
It's on the agenda for tonight.
Okay. All right. And with that, we have four minutes. If anybody needs to quickly run, super quickly run. I'm gonna call the Breckenridge Town Council regular meeting to order for Tuesday, September twenty sixth, twenty twenty three. It is seven P M. And we begin with roll call.
Kelly Owens. Dick Carlton?
Here.
Jeffrey Bergeron?
Here.
Carol Sade?
Here.
Jay Beckerman?
Present.
Todd Rankin?
Here.
Mayor Eric Mamula?
Yes. Approval of the minutes for September twelfth, twenty twenty three. Any changes, corrections, deletions, additions? Minutes stand as presented. Approval of the agenda. Rick?
Oh, changes?
Agenda stands as presented. We go to public comment. Non agenda items only. Three minute time limit. Anyone? Nobody else. It's all you, Carol. Stand up to the mic. Yeah, it should be.
Yeah, can you? Great. Thank you. Carol Rockney, Breckenridge, Colorado. I just want to make some remarks about this development I heard you talk about today. I guess as I can say a few things about it. I mean, I'm shocked because I went to when this was planned before and it was understood that they had moved all the density from that was up the hill from on on Trigree's Run up the hill on that skiable terrain down to the lower development. And that was a part of that master plan. And they did never talked about accessing it and using it. In fact, they did talk about putting some condos, some townhomes along the side and all that. And then they did, they said, no, forget that. We're not. We just want all that density down there. And they agreed to do that. And now all of a sudden I see that they are taking out all that skiable terrain there. And four o'clock is history behind that. That was the first that was the first ski run cut on that mountain was four o'clock run. And they had a little parking lot at the bottom of the town. And it was a fun, easy, and look at all the people and all the condos now that were built along that and they kind of kept down. But now they're going to just demolish that run. They already hurt it the last time with the Timber Trail because Luis Alonso gave them an easement to go through it so that they could do the maintenance building and then make a big swing around and kind of ruined it. Now they're going to butcher it some more. So you can't even get off the snow lift at Snowflake and ski over to Peak Eight. Run. How are you going to do that? They've just demolished the whole thing. And I think that's wrong. And they're bamboozled the town. I'll tell you that. And now is the time to do some horse trading. There's a lot of things that you gave them. And you are right as far as how much money we gave them for the Gondola, how we gave them totally carte blanche on the Metropolitan District that they still today, never sunsets, it's forever. They make millions of dollars on that every year. Get half of that for the town. They call it the Breckenridge Metropolitan District. So that's my main thing I wanted to say. I'm so sorry to see what they're trying to do here, making us look like Vale when we're not supposed to be Vale.
Thanks, Carol. Anyone else this evening? All right, with that, the public comment period is over. Breckenridge Ski Resort update. Jody?
Hi, everyone. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. So twenty days until snowmaking starts. It's a little bit of a heart attack.
Hey, shit.
Yeah. Forty-five days until we are scheduled to open for the season, which is pretty exciting, as you all know. Want to give you a an update quickly on how our summer operations went and then get quickly into where we're at with our construction project of the new five super chair. Yeah, it was a big summer. The resort was managing our construction project right alongside our guest facing summer operations. And we're pretty happy with the way we were able to manage the flow of all of our guests and the and the construction all at the same time. Yeah, we're close to complete. I did a full tour today of the whole project and really happy with how how we're progressing and, you know, we were unable to operate our Alpine Slide all summer. And we were able to modify our coaster operations with all the the trucks coming in and out. And I think overall, we're really pleased. We were spot on to where we thought we would be for the summer. So happy with how that all came to be. I do want to give a huge amount of gratitude to this council for supporting the Fife Chair Project and the Peak Eight renovation. We feel like where we're at, we have had really good results, not only with the town inspections, but also the Forest Service is really pleased with how we've been able to manage. Early on, it was quite a heavy flow of weather that we got in the in the spring. Once we got through that, the project moved really quickly. We actually are moving along with the chair and and I brought Eric, Mayor Mamula, and I had had a discussion and he asked for us to provide some photos and some updates on how the project's been going. So again, just thank you for the support on this project and helping us manage through it to to have the best result for the environment. And and really this upgrade is going to be a massive improvement for the resort. Having all high speed chairs at a peak eight is just a big win for, I think, everybody as it relates to our flow and circulation. So the first slide here is back in June when we started. As you can see, the retaining wall, it was left there. We did take the castle out last summer. Really happy that we did. I think we wouldn't be on schedule the way we are today if we hadn't done that work last year to get ready for this year's work. It's it's a very complex project, given all the the grading that had to come around, taking that retaining wall and the rest of the castle out. So that is a picture of it before everything was removed. This is also a picture. You can see we had already removed the five double chair. Brooke, we can go to the next slide. Yeah, and this this next slide really is is an articulation of you can see, we started to do the big grading part of this project. As you'll see, you'll also notice this is the zip line there in the in the background. It's coming down today. Today marked the day where it's actually halfway down tomorrow. It'll be down to ground. So really excited. It's going to open up a lot of sightlines, some great skiing terrain, particularly around our our ski instruction and our ski school terrain. So things are moving along onto the next picture. Yeah, it was our our employee cleanup day was the day we had our first helicopter come in and do our our pouring of our concrete for our for our tower foundations. And yeah, everything went super smoothly on that day. It was kind of fun for all of our employees to be out doing our our cleanup day and have the helicopters coming in. It was really truly the mark of the beginning of the project. And that was at the end of June. The next slide, this is really actually quite cool. I got a text from Adam Pino about five thirty in the morning. He said, we're we're gonna crane crane the bottom terminal up. Come on out if you can make it. So I rushed over to the mountain and it was really truly the first time in the U S that Palma's ever actually picked up a full built terminal with the bull wheel installed into it, lifted it up, put it over and put it onto the pedestal. So it it was assembled very quickly and went incredibly smoothly. As you can see, it's it's there and it's on. So really excited about that. The next is just really the process around building out the top of the terminal. Pretty, pretty awesome to see it all come together. And we're we're one of the first that will be finished for Palma in the whole country this year. So the team really jammed it out. The next photo is just another aerial of the top terminal up there. When you get up to the top of Chair Five, I think all of you will see it's just it's a different experience. It opens up power line trail. I think a lot more people will start to disperse into terrain that they weren't using before. The next slide was the day we landed our assemblies and in our our crossarms. So if you've if you've ever seen this happen in person, highly recommend it on the on the next one that we do. The lift maintenance crew and the Palma team climb up the towers as the helicopters dropping it and they bolt it right in place as they're doing it in unison. It's actually a fabulous process. And then the last or a couple, couple more slides here. Then we went into, we hung our rope. The next slide, you'll see we assembled and put the chairs on. That happened last week when I was out of town. I'm bummed that I missed it. And yeah, the next slide, really, we're at the end. We're gonna do our load test this weekend. So there's still quite a bit of dirt work that is still happening at the midstation. It's a fairly complex lift because we have the summer Alpine Slide operation. So actually there's an extra tower right in that at that midstation that the the cables come down. The high side stays high, but the the low side comes down so that people can get off and then grab their their Alpine Slide and come around. We're building a a whole asphalt path for them to come and walk around to the new or to the start of the Alpine Slide. So pretty complex project. Really pleased with how it's going. If any of you want to.
Unload only in the summer, then?
Correct.
Will the will the cable only dip in the summer?
Yeah, we have the same exact composition in Park City on the chairlift that is used there. It's called payday. So we use that same model. So let's see. Also, this just really, I think, is a great example of better, not bigger. Working within the the footprint of the ski resort and really trying to improve our flow and circulation and really get that those high speed experiences out of all of our our portal areas. So that is the update on the lift. We did have an auction for the chairs that I had spoken with a few of you about and the best way that we can support the community. We did sell over a hundred of the lifts in the auction and raised over a hundred thousand dollars where we are splitting that with FERC and specific to the Soul Center. And the other half goes to our epic promise for our employees for grants that come out of that program. So that completes three chairlifts in three years, which I you know, in my whole career, I've not been able to to be able to say that. We're really fortunate here in Breckenridge that we're investing so heavily in our lift infrastructure and making the resort better every year. Winter plans and and operations, we are shoot, it's right around the corner. November tenth, we'll be here before we know it. Like I said, forty-five days and and we'll be open. Again, we're starting snowmaking. We're planning for mid October. And yeah, we're we're ready to start pushing it around and get going for the year. Our new learning zone for the kids on Peak Eight where the castle was is coming together really nicely. We think that grading on the bottom portion of that will be done by the end of this week. And so put trying to put everything back to bed, re veg it and and get ready for for snowmaking. We are still scheduled for Wake Up Breck on November ninth. So we're excited about that. Last year, we did an employee preview ski day. We hope to do that again this year. We are also looking at our Community First Tracks event in January and each Friday in January. That was a really well received last year from the community. So we're planning to do that again. And I did want to highlight, we are having signature food offerings at our outlets on the mountain this year and really, really looking at promoting those and really getting people to experience a different kind of food experience in our restaurant. So I'll invite you all to a special preview for that. Because we are excited to to start to change up our menus a little bit and and have more to offer and variety throughout the mountain. We are planning to launch our pilot removal of plastic bottles at Pine Air Crossing this We are planning to launch our pilot removal of plastic bottles at Pioneer Crossing this year. So we're ahead of the June 2024 initiative here in the town. And we just felt like it's super important for us to understand how to best execute it when the ban is in effect. So this is, this was not mandated. It's something we just felt was the right thing to do to get our, ourselves and, and start the sustainability program sooner than, rather than later. We thought doing it across the whole resort might be too big of a heavy lift, but we do think that we can make a material difference just by starting at Pioneer Crossing this year. So we'll report back out to you on how that's going and you know, really also pressure testing how our partners, our vendors are going to be able to support that and get ready for the bigger launch in 2024. Yeah. So again, just a reminder about our strategic priorities. We are not changing them. And you've heard me talk about it multiple times here at council, but really focused on our prioritizing our community, our employees and our flow and circulation. Those are our top three priorities for the resort and our, our team is fully committed around it. And I do just want to give a huge amount of credit to our, our lift maintenance and our mountain operations team for pulling off an incredibly complex summer of construction and, and summer operations. And that's about it. We'll open it up to questions.
Are you only going, not only, thank you very much for doing the water, the plastics. I'm curious if you're doing water or water and all the other drinks?
We're doing all bottled beverages.
That's exciting. Thanks for testing that out.
Yep.
How'd that go with your partners?
Um, it's going well. They're, they're in support and they're, they're planning, you know? And so they're planning to be supportive of our initiative this year, but really trying to really fast track this to make sure they're ready for the full launch. Yeah, we've had good, good reception from them.
Where's next year's lift going?
We're definitely starting the process for our Peak Nine Master Development Plan.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
I don't know if you listened to our meeting earlier. You probably didn't. I wouldn't if I was you. But we would like you to go 50/50 with us on the bus thing. So just putting it out there. Snowstang, I mean, whatever it's called. Snowstang. So we're, we're in, but we can only be in if you're in. So think about it.
Definitely will. Thanks for that.
Yeah. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks for the pictures too. It was awesome. Yeah. Tourism, Lucy Kay.
I will be brief. I've invited Melissa Andrews to join me, our PR director, and she's got pictures. I don't. I want to congratulate Jody and the ski resort on just this amazing project they've done. Flying Towers is one of the coolest things that happens on the mountain, in my opinion. And I thought we had a big thing with our office move, but that's now in its proper perspective. I'm not even going to talk about it. So for the summer, for the summer, we are looking like we're still 3% up, which is about our goal. That's room nights. That's not revenue. We may not hit the revenue target because ADRs are down. September was up 7% and that's given Mountain 2030 and another large group at Beaver Run was not here this year. So that's actually pretty strong. Our Oktoberfest weekend, we were down every night except Sunday. But last year that was Mountain 2030. So the fact, we were pretty close, you know, so, you know, we thought that was strong. October's down 19%. So somehow we hit our goal of 3% up for the summer and giving some people their October back. But I think October's still going to fill in just short-term stuff. So that is where we, we hit about 60% out-of-state business for the summer with a 91% MPS score. So we're really happy about that. Real quickly on Oktoberfest and overall success, I mean, the whole team turned out. Thank you Kelly for your note for Majae and Sarah in particular. We all echo that a million times. They did a phenomenal job. Everybody did a phenomenal job. We were able to raise over a thousand pounds of perish, non-perishable food items for FERC, which is about three times what we did last year, which was the first year. Everything went smooth for the most part. Tebow, you know, leaned in, got us more trucks, got us more taps. And we had bar managers in every location and that really helped the line. We didn't have the problems we had last year. I know some of you, Eric, had some issues and we're well aware of that. I think overall though with, from PD, they were okay with the event. We didn't have too many, too many issues that way. Successful financially, we're still waiting for some final expense numbers to come in. So enough of that. Resident sentiment survey, we had our final committee meeting this morning. So the resident sentiment, which will be the fourth one, that'll go out next week. And this one is quality of life focused. A lot of the questions we've always had in these surveys, but we've just sort of coalesced around that quality of life issue to really try to get at that a little better. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Melissa.
Thanks Lucy.
Okay. Hello.
Hi.
My name is Melissa Andrews. For those who don't know me, I'm the Director of Public Relations for the Breck Tourism Office. So I run our earned media program and what that means is I'm working with journalists and other reporters who want to cover Breckenridge in the news. My focus is to influence their storytelling so we can bring through our goals for summer marketing as well as sustainable destination management. This summer, we had a really successful hosting season. And when I say hosting, I mean inviting in these members of the media and showing them our fabulous destination. We had 24 members of the media come through and working with me and the BTO. And we really invested in a mix of what I would consider short-term results. People like broadcast journalists who are going live and influencing that booking window for the summer. And then long-term resort results. So folks like Conde Nast and New York Times writers who can take their inspiration from Breckenridge and use that to hopefully write about next summer. A few highlights that you'll see up on the screen. We had Good Morning America come through, talk about mountain biking in Breckenridge. We had Janine Tornatori, who broadcasts live to 15 markets across the nation early on in the summer to try to influence that shorter booking window. And then we had influencers, travel writers from Mexico, as well as some really great diversity and family influencers. So I would say it was a great success this summer. And just on the next slide, I do want to say thank you to our community as well as our business community here because I'm working with our business partners all summer long to really showcase what we have to offer and bring media through. So I'm here, reach out anytime if you have anything new going on in your business or if you have questions and would like to work with us. But thank you for your support of our earned media program.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions for either of them? All right. Good work. Thanks. Okay. We go to continued business. We have the second reading of Council Bill Number 32, Series 2023. This is a bill for an ordinance mending policy 3A pertaining to density calculations for net zero energy buildings.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Hi Sarah.
Hi. This, this bill again is an amendment to Policy 3R. It will change the way we calculate density for buildings that achieve net zero. It eliminates the, between the insulation cavity measuring from the midpoint to the exterior wall from counting towards that total density. This is just a way to recognize they're achieving total density and not penalize the, by taking away livable square footage. Staff recommends that you pass this on second reading. There have been no changes since first reading.
Questions for staff? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this second reading this evening? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On second reading, I move we pass Council Bill Number 32, Series 2023, the title which has been read into the record.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call please, Helen.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergeron.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Uh, we have the first reading of Council Bill Number 33, Series 2023. This is a bill for an ordinance approving the FND plaster lease between the town of Breckenridge and the Breckenridge Outdoor Education Center.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Before you is a first reading for the FND plaster lease for the Breckenridge Outdoor Education Center. As we discussed this afternoon at work session, it has a number of amendments that I think were overseen and directed by council and staff supports your approval on first reading.
Thank you Scott. Uh, any questions for staff?
I noticed that Bill Number 33 and 34 are very similar. Can I just, could you make like a, a group motion?
Cannot. One motion, buddy. One motion. Just curious. All right. Anyone in the public wish to comment on this first reading this evening? No, public hearings closed. Is there a motion on the, just the one we're talking about?
On first reading, I move we pass Council Bill Number 33, Series 2023, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergeron.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman. Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Uh, we have the first reading of Council Bill Number 34, Series 2023. This is a bill for an ordinance approving the Wellington lease between the town of Breckenridge and the Breckenridge Outdoor Education Center.
Once again, we have before you for first reading, the lease between the Breckenridge Outdoor Education Center and the town regarding the administrative building which is located on Wellington Road. We talked about this afternoon. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those. Otherwise we would suggest to pass on first reading.
Thank you. Questions? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this first reading this evening? Public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
Once again, I'd like to make a motion for the passing on first reading, Council Bill Number 34, Series 2023, the title which has been read into the record.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Councilmember Beckerman. Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergeron.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. We have the first reading of Council Bill Number 35, Series 2023. This is a bill for an ordinance to create new exemptions from taxation in the sales tax code.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This bill proposes adding exemptions to our tax code. Those exemptions would be any imposed government fees as well as incontinence products and diapers and menstrual care products.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this first reading this evening? No, without the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On my first reading, we pass Council Bill Number 35, Series 2023, the title which has been leaked into the record.
Second. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergeron.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. You won't have to deal with this because he'll be gone. We have a first reading of Council Bill Number 36, Series 2023. This is a bill for an ordinance conveying town property for the first phase of the Stables Workforce Housing Project.
Uh, Mayor and Council, this, uh, this ordinance would allow the town to convey a property that's going to be used for the development of workforce housing. Town charter requires that any time that we convey town-owned property must be done in the form of an ordinance.
Thank you, Rick. Any questions? Anyone in the prob, public wish to comment on this first reading?
I just had a quick question.
Yes, Carol.
Who are the principal owners of this LLC?
It's Susan Alengara and Thrive Development out of Denver. They do workforce housing.
Okay.
And then they're going to in turn sell the properties at established pricing that's part of the contract we have.
And is it going to be in their name then?
It will not be in their name after they sell. It'll be in the name of the homeowners that they sell to.
Okay. So it will be paying property taxes and eventually?
Yes, eventually.
Oh, that's so nice.
Uh, anyone else in the public wish to comment this evening? All right. Public hearings closed. Is there a motion?
On first reading, I move we pass Council Bill Number 36, Series 2023, the title which has been read into the record.
Second. A second. Any further discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergeron.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. We have a council, first reading of Council Bill Number 37, Series 2023. It's a bill for an ordinance pro, creating $20,000 in local funds in support of grant application to the Colorado Department of Local Government, Local Affairs, DOLA, for Strong Communities Planning Grant.
Mayor and Council, you have before you an ordinance that would give two things. One, the approval or your thumbs up for us to move forward with a DOLA grant for $200,000. That will help us with initial planning and soil testing on Block 11 and appropriating $20,000, which would be the required match for that grant. We're happy to answer any questions if you have.
Thank you. Questions? Anyone in the public wish to comment on this first reading? Without the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
On first reading, I move we pass Council Bill Number 37, Series 2023, the title which has been read into the record.
Second.
Uh, any further discussion from council? No, roll call.
Councilmember Bergeron.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Owens.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. All right. We have a resolution this evening. It's Resolution Number 17, Series 2023. It's a resolution approving a contract with the town attorney establishing the terms of reappointment.
Uh, Mayor Council, um, this is exactly what it says, a resolution for you to approve the terms and conditions of the contract. I will make one important note and that is there was a change to subsection 3G from what was presented in the packet into what you're approving. And that change is to make it clear that any administrative support that is, you know, given around legal services is only in service of the town, not in service of, of the contractor status. Um, and with that, I, you need to make a motion, I guess.
Thank you. All right. Anyone in the public wish to comment on this resolution this evening? Without the public comment period is closed. Is there a motion?
I move we pass Resolution Number 17, Series 2023, a resolution approving a contract with the town attorney establishing the terms of reappointment.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Councilmember Owens.
Yes.
Councilmember Rankin.
Yes.
Councilmember Sade.
Yes.
Councilmember Bergeron.
Yes.
Councilmember Beckerman.
Yes.
Councilmember Carlton.
Yes.
Mayor Mamula.
Yes. Uh, we have town manager appointment.
There is no, uh, that should be on there. Well, the council will be taking action to approve a contract with Shannon Haines at the, uh,
24th meeting.
All right.
So there's nothing on.
Very good. Uh, planning commission decisions from, uh, whatever the last meeting was. Anybody from the 19th? Any questions? Nope. Planning Commission decisions stand as presented. Report to town manager and staff, Rick?
Nothing.
All right. Report to the town council.
We're cast next week. I don't know, I'm MMC next week.
Over. Big one. I gotta, I gotta brush up. Oh, I won't be there. Oh, what do you know?
Why?
Well, isn't it?
The sixth.
Oh.
Yeah. Day before a special meeting.
Be a little peckish. Yeah. I have some stuff, but I'll talk about it in other matters then. Open space.
We had a meeting last night and, uh, apply, we're applying for a state grant, uh, state trail grant for maintenance of in-town kiosks, wheelchair-friendly improvements at the troll and a replacement of a bouncy bridge, which is, uh, where's the bouncy? It's on Peak Nine somewhere, right? Huh? The Rivetree. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Okay. Also a cucumber gulps reserve, friends of cucumber gulps sent us a proposal to kind of check out the new alignment or possible alignment of Peak, uh, the trail to Peak Seven. It doesn't address all water and habitat fragmentation as a concern, but staff will compile more information as we go along. Leaves No Trace, uh, this is a program that you can kind of sign up for and get educated in leaving no trace. Tony finishes level, level two certification in order to train town staff and concessionaires and partners for Leave No Trace messaging. Our hope is to obtain a gold level certification for that, certification for that in our open space and trail in the next few years demonstrating, uh, training for a lead no space. We did a site visit to the new wheelchair-friendly trail.
Nice.
Um, yeah, we brought a wheelchair upon my request and I, I gave everybody a, a chance to push me.
And?
And a couple of people had it, almost blew out a lung. Seth was conveniently absent. Uh, uh, cause I, I think he didn't want to do interval work. But, um, it was, uh, it, uh, it was for some of it because it's a crush upon. Now granted, this was not a, this is more of a sprinting wheelchair than an off-road wheelchair. Dude, dude brought it from Centura. So you know it's high quality. Um, but, uh, so people were pushing it. And it was, you know, Carol, uh, Carol, uh, pushed her mother or their husband pushed her mother, um, in the wheelchair. Uh, and, and he's, you guys all know him. He's kind of a beast and, uh, he's, he was having a little bit of, he, he was, he was okay, but I don't, I don't think.
He had a much more pleasant passenger probably.
Exactly. So there's no question there. No, I just, I'm just saying, um, the reality is, uh, we're gonna put up signage to kind of give kind of a, 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 a warning of, you know, if you're not hottie or, or, you know, like when Ellie and I pushed your father, I push and she gets behind me and pushes on a hill similar to that. But it was, um.
So she pushes you?
Yes. I push it. I push the father and she pushes me.
Okay.
And it's, and I gotta tell you, it's kind of romantic. Um. Way to picture. But, uh, yeah. So, uh, so that's what we did that. And, uh, we're gonna put some signage to try to kind of caveat it. You know, let the buyer be aware what they're getting into. But that said, um, it is a, it is a pretty cool experience, especially when, when the asthma is changing and we are gonna do the bump outs on the bridge next summer. Um, and it was barely room in me in the wheelchair, um, to, to, to do a U-turn. We had to do like a ten-point turn to get me, get me around and I refused to leave the wheelchair and make it easier because I wanted to give people a real-life experience. So, um, yeah, that, that's what we did.
And that's a great point, how that trail increases access to a certain user group. But we still need that fully ADA compliant trail that staff's working on.
And we are working on that. Yeah. So, so, yeah. So that's, that's kind of cool. And, uh, we also checked out the new location for the Keystone Drill.
Okay. Where's the new location?
Well, it's, it's right now it's in Country Boy. Wasn't.
Oh, we're gonna do in the B and B parking lot.
In the B and B parking lot, kind of to the, to the east. So, yeah, it's a pretty cool location.
Section HH.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So that's kind of cool. So that was, that was it.
The ADA trail came out great. Um, through the trees.
Yeah.
Those gray trees, they did a great job of making sure they didn't take too many down.
And you know what else it's gonna be good for? People like, like not just in wheelchairs, but in walkers. You know what I mean? People that are just kind of mo- mobile, mobility challenged.
And you could rip through there on a bike.
You could, yeah. Well, Seth wants to put the double jump, um, for the, for the, for the kids.
All right. There you have it. Uh, tourism.
Uh, meeting tomorrow.
Breckenridge history.
You did the Melanie Site Tour and.
How'd that go?
Great job.
It was outstanding.
Yeah. It'll be exciting to see how they bring that to life.
Yeah. Creative arts.
Friday.
CML Advisory Board update.
Can you have a meeting in two weeks? I will give an update after that.
Childcare.
No meeting.
And social equity.
Minutes were in the packet.
Beautiful. Other matters?
Quick one for you. The Portland Winterhawks, a high-level hockey team are, uh, looking at doing a summer camp here. Maybe next summer or maybe the following, depending on how their ice arena goes, uh, doing a big remodel there in Portland.
Who is this?
Uh, Portland Winterhawks. Their owner's got connections to Breck and he was like, yeah, maybe we do it here for a week. So.
Yeah.
Be cool. Are there other matters?
Is that crosswalk, um, at the police, between police station and Kingdom Park getting any consideration?
Um, where we land, James, you remember, were you guys looking into that?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, James.
You got anything? Yes, I do. Um, so I had some like, uh, old medicine I want to get rid of, you know? I mean, like, you know, and you're not supposed to flush it down the toilet, you know, so, you know, be just.
Elementary school.
Elementary school.
You're gonna sell it.
The courthouse.
Jeff, that's it. But, but so I, so I brought it to the police station because I thought they could do it there. They, they, they don't do it at our police station. So I went to the courthouse and, you know, I had a big bag of it. And, uh, uh, they wanted me to put it back in the, to kind of sort it out, put it back in all the little containers. It just should be an easier thing to do. You know what I mean? Like, so I, so I ended up, uh, I gotta tell you, I.
Jeffrey, just next time, put it in a brown paper bag, throw brown paper bag in there.
Yeah.
And don't talk too much.
No, I couldn't get into the court. They wouldn't let me into the courthouse.
Of course.
Because, well, because I had, I had metal and stuff and, and I just asked them, it was right, it was right like ten feet away. So I want, I gave it to the, the lady, the cop. I say, just throw it in there. And she was, I can't. And, and, yeah. And, because it wasn't in containers. It just should be easier. And I had like ten different, you know, I just cleaned out my medicine cabinet at all, you know, not the good stuff, but all other things. And, and, uh, you know, so anyway, there should be a place where people can just, without questions asked, drop their pills.
I agree with that.
You know?
Tell, tell the sheriff next time, Missy.
Yeah. I, I, I wrote him, I wrote him, texted him, but I couldn't even get to him because there was two, you know, police that, although the metal detector.
If you didn't have your knife, you could have walked in, you know?
Or your brass knuckles.
I had, I had a lot of metal. I had a lot of metal on me.
That's a problem.
Yeah.
All right. Carol, anything?
Jay? Okay, I got four quick things. Uh, I do. Hey, listen, I got stuff going on. I got high Quandary with Bennett on Sunday with Michael Bennett and, uh, Hunter Mortensen.
Yeah.
And some, some staff members and some people from the state and it was excellent.
Did you just kick their butts?
I'm not gonna say that. It was, it was aw- Dan Gibbs was there too.
Okay. So he kicked everybody's butt.
Um, it was excellent. He is a, he is a great public servant and I am really happy that he is a senator from our state.
He's, he's, yeah.
He is just a decent human being, I will tell you.
Bennett?
Bennett. Yeah, he re- and Hunter Mortensen knows more about the mountains in this area than I. He stood on top of Quandary and listed every peak. It was really cool. He has now hiked Quandary twice and he's been on Quandary over thirty times for rescue. He's been with Summit Search and Rescue for nineteen years. So Hunter's been a really valuable member of our community too. Um, so that was great. Um, the stamps thing, we did the, the inaugural, um, or the unveiling of the stamps and Todd was there and Jenna was there and it was super cool. It was way cooler than I thought it would be. Post office did a really great job. And then we sat down and did, I thought this was really weird, but we signed autographs. Scott spoke, I spoke, and then we were listed on the card and we, there was all these people that collect stamps and they wanted our autograph and it was super weird for me. But we did it anyway. So that was cool.
Hey, um, post office is, is, is doing great.
I mentioned our postal guy.
They've got a great.
My thing. And I talked to the district manager who's brand new to say that Johnny, the new, um, postmaster is really doing a great job. Um, number three, Berlin Placer. I don't know if you guys know what's going on up there. I've received a couple of phone calls. If you recall, we gave water to Berlin Placer plus some money in exchange for workforce housing. The work, the, the market rate housing that's up there is not to be CO'd until the workforce housing is in place. There are now people that own homes up there that want to CO, but nothing else has been done. I am assuming that you will be reached out to by attorneys about this. Don't forget, we have an agreement. Maybe this leads to some county and town deal for the property eventually, but right now there is nothing we can do. We cannot CO for homes to put money in the pocket of the developer without getting what we're.
Where is he?
Where? They were there. I was up there today. I went to have a look today. They were working today. I, I don't, I don't.
They're laundry list of, uh, stuff.
Things that are wrong.
Yeah.
Stuff put too deep. I mean, the whole thing, you're gonna be hearing about it though. So before you talk to too many people about, you know, or make any promises, um, make sure, you know, we're all on the same page with that.
Should I run it by a barrister before you do expedite?
Yeah, or the, or the boss or the new boss.
The new bosses.
Yes.
Soon to be boss.
What's, um?
Yeah.
And then the final thing, I, I just wanted to mention, you know, um, Lucy mentioned Oktoberfest. The night of Oktoberfest, the Saturday night of Oktoberfest is awful for a lot of the businesses on Main Street. I know it's an important thing for the BTO. I think it's an important event for town. I'm not against the event, but there has to be some assistance given rather than a bunch of people getting drunk and then at six o'clock, you unleash them on the community. We had, it just, it's, it's terrible. You know, the net, the following Saturday night was calm and mellow and we did as much business as we did Oktoberfest without somebody taking a dump in the hall and people throwing up and stuff getting broken. And it's really, for me, it's not worth it. I mean, we've, we've talked internally about just closing that night, which is not a good look for town. But without some kind of assistance, you know, I don't know what else to do. Every year it's something. Something gets busted. There's a fight, you know, it's just, it's stuff that we don't deal with at any other point during the year. And some of the retailers on Main Street like Mountain Goat, they, they don't, you know, it's just a crappy event for them, especially after it's closed and those people are just allowed to run, run wild. So, um, take that for what it's worth. I think we need to do something to help the merchants going forward.
We talked to the BTO about.
Yeah. And I talked to Wachowski about it. He called me on the street and I didn't want to spoil his wonderful experiences he was having, but I called him the next day and totally rained on his parade about it. Um, yeah, it's just, it's tough. And I, you know, it's a great event. I mean, during the day, it is an awesome event that I think is great for town. But I didn't agree with them adding more, more beer or making, getting beer easier. I think that's, I like the long lines because that.
I, yeah. That one I don't agree with because it just made for a horribly bad for all of our guests before.
Yeah, I know. But now it's, you know, it's free pour now. And I, there is not enough, there is just not enough control over what's going on in the street. It is way too easy for people to get way too wasted. So I don't know how we, I don't know what we do.
I think the, the, you know, the control is what people are bringing into that event. Cause you know, from my experience, it's not them drinking, you know, Breck Brewery beer that's doing it. It's what they're bringing in their backpack.
Yeah, we need to be better because it's also supposed to be a non-dog event and there were a lot of dogs. So I'm not sure what that was all about either. I don't know if the security company is just terrible or what the deal is. But, you know, we're honestly, as the town council, we're, we're one, we're one moment away from a disaster on that event. You know, something can easily happen. And the fact that somebody actually took a poop in the arcade blows me away. You know, I just don't, I don't need that. So.
I was out of town, just FYI.
Yeah, I was looking for you on a security camera. So anyway, that's all I got. Uh, with that, anything else for the good of the order?
I'm out of order. I know.
Out of order. We are adjourned.
Compliment you guys. She was buried today, that lady that you helped buy a unit at Kingdom Park. She's left a, a twelve-year-old son and her husband, but they had too very happy. Oh. And he only caused a you that that happened. If you remember, you traded a unit. You took a unit up at where you could deed restrict it. And you know, I had it put in the, that you couldn't deed, can never deed restrict at Kingdom Park. But you absolutely made that happen and I want to compliment you on that.